Good afternoon, boys and girls.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Flannigan.
Yes, ma'am. The time is now 1:06. We're close to doing what we're resolved to do, which is starting on time at 1:00. And I'm going to get the kids organized here in just a moment. All the assistant principal coming out here. And a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Ed meeting of March 11, 2014 is called to order. We're going to go right to public participation because we have a good number of folks here, and we'll appreciate your taking the time to spend some time with us.
As we go into public participation, I've got a few reminders for you. You'll each be given five minutes, and you can monitor that here on the timer. If you have handouts, if you give it to the nearest person seated at the table by you, they're happy to pass those around. The board does not engage in conversation, but they're happy to hear whatever you've come to present. So I'll tell you who is coming to the table, and then I'll tell you who's next, so you'll be able to anticipate. The first speaker is Robbie Kramer, and she will be followed by Jennifer Arnswald. So Robbie, if you'll come to the table.
Good afternoon. I'm Robbie Kramer, and usually I'm here in a different capacity, but today I'm here as a teacher with the permission from my director. I am from the Van Andel Education Institute, the Science Academy, which is where I spend most of my day, teaching kids in an after-school program in formal science. Our children come from the greater Grand Rapids area, and we teach them in an after-school program. They apply to come. There is no charge. The foundation provides for the education, and also if our kids cannot, their parents can't afford to bring them there during that time of the day, we provide taxi service from the schools to the institute, and then we will also taxi them home if they cannot, if their parents cannot be there to pick them up because they're working second shift. The reason we do that is because our children represent all the demographics of the city of Grand Rapids, and we want, our premise is that all kids can learn science, and we are looking for children who want to learn how to think and act like scientists. Now, sometimes it really isn't the children who want to think and act like scientists, but it's a grandparent, or it is a neighbor, or it is a school principal, or it is somebody in a big sister, big brother program who really encourages them to apply for this program. They come to us for three years. It's after-school, 60 hours either in the fall or the spring, over two times a week, or they come in the summer for a longer period of time. We see them for three years, and we're able to see how their thinking increases in depth and in quality over time. So our premise is all kids can learn to think and act like scientists. Our theme deals with biology. The big question that we look at has to do with biodiversity and its effect on our human health, and that's because we're also a research institute. We have scientists down the hill who are studying cancer and Parkinson's disease, and so we have that opportunity to really see what the world of science looks like in today's This is my 41st year of teaching school, elementary kids and up through middle school, and it is so much fun to help them begin taking a look at how scientists use the practices that we do. And so when we tell them we're going to help them to think and act like scientists, one of the things we might do is have hissing cockroaches in a box, in a container, clear that they can make observations of. And as they begin to make those observations, and they begin to express those wonderings, we take them and put them, listen to what they're saying, and help them to translate them into questions. And then from those questions, we help them to design their own investigations, and then to begin to collect all those observations that help answer that question. And then in terms of using those scientific practices of analyzing the data, they go back in and look for those important pieces, and look at what patterns and trends they're noticing, and then they come up with their explanations, their claims. And so some of the questions they ask are like, "How do those hissing cockroaches defend themselves against predators?" And they might take a paintbrush and gently touch the side of the cockroach to see what it's doing and how it's moving, and to really hear that hissing noise. Or they watch the crested gecko as it goes up the side of the container, and the wondering might be, "How can they climb up glass? What are they doing?" And it's all those questions, and then being able to come back helps them to make their claim, support it with evidence, and then explain their reasoning or their thinking why this is the answer to their question. What is important about this program is that it is built on the same research as some of the new standards that are coming out. We're encouraging all of our science teachers in Michigan to use these practices to help their kids be deeper thinkers. The premise that we have at the institute is that all kids can learn science and do science, and this is what we want to see happen for all kids in Michigan. Thank you for letting me share our story, and I appreciate your interest. Good day.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jennifer Arnswald, and she'll be followed by Samantha Suter.
Oh, bookmarks. Can't have them.
My name's Jennifer Arnswald. I'm from the Kent Intermediate School District, and I'm here today to talk about a project that we worked on last summer. Just a little bit about myself, I came from a school in Battle Creek. I was a teacher of math and science for six years, and I've been at the ISD for three years. So last summer, we were approached with an opportunity to create some materials for teachers to use that were about science best practice and Title I supports for specifically our priority and focus schools in Michigan. And we met, and we, with a group of consultants and teachers around the state, and they determined that what teachers really needed were some materials that they can do professional development in many ways, when not necessarily someone, you know, we're very fortunate in Kent ISD to have a science consultant, but many districts don't have the luxury of having someone to be able to support them in close proximity. So what we ended up deciding to do was we made professional development modules last summer. We based them around the science and engineering practices that are in the next-generation science standards, because they are based off of the most current research on how kids learn, and how, we have seen the results from studies in the Detroit area, how kids engage in these types of practices. It actually increases their achievement levels in staggering results because they are so engaged in the science that they are learning. And we thought that would be a great area for focus in priority schools to be able to look at. So, is this open? Can I go out to the website? Is that permitted, or no?
Sure.
I don't have to. It's on the bookmark. You can go later. That's all right.
Not sure if we're hooked up or not.
You're welcome to try. You're welcome to try.
I'll give it a shot. Well, I don't know if we have the right. It doesn't like Internet Explorer, so is there another one on here?
That clock needs to stop.
It's a, it's a.
It's a restart model.
Uh-oh. I promise I won't take that much. So if you do have the opportunity to go, the website contains videos of the modules themselves, so that teachers can do this training by themselves. There's also directions then. If they were in a science department meeting, they could do those at their school without a facilitator. Then there's also facilitator guides for people that do want to run it. In fact, I used one of the activities yesterday at Kent ISD with a group of teachers about changing some of their classroom instruction. The group of people that were able to make these were university people. It was actually a statewide collaborative project, so there were people from, all the way from, from Macomb County all the way over to Muskegon County, working on these. So it was really a joint effort across the state. And some of the feedback that I've received from teachers is that they really appreciate having something that they can use anytime, anywhere for their learning, and they can use in any format that they like. So I thought it was very important to draw attention that, you know, these materials not only support our students right now with Title I and our teachers, but we're hoping to create additional modules in the future, and they will also be extremely valuable if we do end up adopting the next-generation science standards. And the, another value to them is that they can be used as a blended material, so then if teachers, or if you're going to a professional development, you can do some learning beforehand. So we're just hoping to continue getting the word out. We've been sharing it at every conference we can, and we're just very proud of them, and I wanted to share them with you.
Say hi to Kevin.
The next speaker is Samantha Suter, followed by Sarah Suror. Hopefully I said that correctly.
Thank you.
Sarah smirked, so it's probably a little different pronunciation.
Feel free to correct me when you come to the table if anybody, if I'm saying your name wrong.
I don't know.
Ready?
I am ready.
Okay, we're ready when you are.
Okay, excellent. Good afternoon, President Austin and honored board members. My name is Samantha Suter, and I'm a science education specialist with People for the Ethical Treatment of Animals, and I'm also currently a college biology instructor. I received my master's degree from the Citadel in Charleston, South Carolina, and my undergrad from College of Charleston, both in biology. I'm also a member of the National Science Teachers Association, the National Association of Biology Teachers, and the Human Anatomy and Physiology Society. I'm here today to encourage the Michigan State Board of Education to join many other states by adopting a progressive policy allowing compassionate students to opt out of animal dissection in favor of a humane alternative assignment that does not involve using any animals. According to recent Gallup polls, a growing majority of young adults oppose experiments on animals, and studies show that many students have reservations about classroom animal dissection, but often participate because they feel pressured to do so, either explicitly or implicitly. Because of these growing concerns, in the United States, there are 20 states plus a district of Columbia that have passed laws and policies allowing students to be provided with a non-animal alternative to animal dissection. In New Mexico, New Hampshire, pardon me, in New Mexico, Massachusetts, and most recently DC, these board of educations have created the policies themselves. New Hampshire's board is poised to pass such a policy later this week as well. Similarly, the leading science education organizations in the United States, the National Science Teachers Association, the National Association of Biology Teachers, and the Human Anatomy and Physiology Society, all advise teachers to offer students alternatives to animal dissection. The NSTA and HAPS also endorse a teacher's decision to completely replace animal dissection with non-animal methods, such as interactive computer programs. Many educators like me have done this already. Evidence of the effectiveness of these humane learning tools is extensive. Research has repeatedly found that students who are taught both basic and advanced biological concepts using non-animal methods do as well as or better on assessment than their peers who dissected animals. In terms of benefits for schools and educators, non-animal learning methods take up less instructional time because there's no setup and cleanup time, no obligatory safety lessons, no expensive fees for hazardous material disposals or purchasing the prepared animals. Software programs cost much less, and the programs usually only need to be purchased once, and many can be used forever without any additional licensing fees. And there are also lots of digital dissection programs that are available free and online. Implementing a student dissection choice policy in Michigan would ensure that all schools have inclusive policies that give compassionate students access to modern humane learning methods, so they are not forced to violate their religious or moral obligations. We encourage the board to join many other states by establishing a dissection choice policy for students, and we would be pleased to help facilitate such a program by donating dissection alternatives to schools for the whole state of Michigan through our educational grants initiative. I thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sarah Suror. And Sarah, will you please come to the table and tell me how to say your last name correctly?
Suror.
Suror, okay.
It took me two years after getting married to say it correctly, so.
And the next speaker will be Melissa Karpal.
All right, I guess I'm ready. So my name is Sarah Suror, and I'm a resident of Michigan and a mother of two children, ages four and a half and two and a half. I was a certified massage therapist, but now I'm just a stay-at-home mom. And I'm here today to ask the Board of Education to adopt a policy allowing students to opt out of classroom animal dissection. Sorry. Each year in the United States, an estimated 10 million animals are dissected in classrooms, and people tend to think these animals are already dead and dismiss concerns about animal welfare. But these animals lived once, and they were killed just for dissection. The trade in millions of amphibians for classroom use is particularly cruel, including traumatic capture, hoard confinement, and crude killing methods. Fetal pigs are often spiced from their dead mothers at slaughterhouses. Cats who are commonly used for dissections in classrooms typically come from shelters and could have been someone's lost or surrendered companion animal. In light of these animal welfare concerns, many students are understandably uncomfortable with participating in or observing classroom animal dissections. I know I refused to do it when I was growing up, and took plant biology at my local college to opt out of it. Some students only partake out of fear of punishment, grade reduction from their teachers. Studies have shown that forcing students to dissect can even dissuade some students, especially females, from pursuing careers in science later in life, because they're so traumatized by the experience. I am raising my children to have compassion for all animals, and absolutely would not want them to be encouraged or forced to cut up animals, especially when there are so many other humane ways that they can learn to understand and appreciate animals and biology. Ensuring that effective non-animal learning methods are made available to all students create a more inclusive learning environment that does not risk alienating any concerned young people who might be uncomfortable with animal laboratories. I'm sure you agree that we should be fostering compassion and empathy in young people, not eroding their concerns for the most vulnerable among us. Thank you for listening to my concerns, and I hope you will choose to go with this program.
Thank you.
Melissa Karpal, followed by Kate Brindle.
Thank you for your time. My name is Melissa Karpal, and I've lived in Michigan here for the past two years in Alma in Grasset County. I just recently came from Los Angeles, so I'm just getting used to the winters, but it's totally worth it because this is the most beautiful state, so I'm very happy to be here.
This is a mild winter, by the way.
I know. I'm surviving, so it's going to get better. I am here to respectfully urge the Board of Education to enact a policy to allow students to opt out of classroom animal dissection. Today, 98% of medical schools, including every medical school here in Michigan, do not use any animal laboratories to teach medical students, including for training in anatomy, surgery, physiology, and pharmacology. Experience with animal dissection is not required or expected for incoming medical students, and people who, people can now become board-certified surgeons without ever having to dissect or experiment on a frog, a cat, a pig, or any other animal. Instead of outdated animal labs, doctors in training are now taught using computer simulations, lifelike mannequins, models, and other humane methods. If we can train doctors without having to cut into animals, certainly we can teach elementary school, middle school, and high school students without using animal models. Popular computer programs like Digital Frog and Frog Guts include animations on how the living body works, modules about ecology, and even teach students what frogs sound like. None of these things can be taught with an animal cadaver. Unlike dissections where students only have one shot to make the right cut, software allows students to repeat the material until they are proficient and confident. All students can learn biology without cutting up dead animals, but at the very least, those who have moral, religious, or other objections to harming animals should be allowed to reject dissection in favor of modern alternatives. My fiance is a board-certified orthopedic surgery, surgeon, excuse me, my fiance, he's a board-certified orthopedic surgeon practicing here in Michigan, and I got his thoughts on this. And he, it was interesting because he said that, and when he was in high school, he did dissection, and it really had no positive impact or any sort of motivation for his future medical practice and to become a surgeon. And also, in his words, as he put it, "Dead tissue soaked in formaldehyde looks, feels, and reacts completely different than anything in living tissue." And so it had really no impact whatsoever on his current practice as a surgeon. So both he and I will look forward to hopefully have the opportunity for our future children to opt out of dissection without penalty. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kate Brindle, please, and following Kate is Kathy Barker.
My name is Kate Brindle, and I'm a resident of Michigan. I'm originally from Dexter, Michigan. I attended Dexter Community Schools K through 12, went off to college, worked in the nonprofit field for quite a while, and then actually moved up to this area to attend law school at Michigan State University, which is where I currently go to school. I too respectfully request that the Board enact a policy allowing all students to choose a non-animal method to learn biology. And I'd like to take this opportunity to share a few suggestions on what such policies should include, based on best practices in other states. To ensure that students are given plenty of time to make a decision about whether to participate in animal dissection, choice policies should include a requirement for teachers to notify students verbally and in writing of their options in advance of any planned animal dissection activity. To ensure that the students' wishes are clear, there should be a process for students to formally opt out of dissection, such as either sending an email to their teacher or using a written form. Students opting out of dissection should be provided with an alternate project that does not involve participating in or observing dissection, and through which they can be, which they can learn and be assessed. This often entails completing a computer-based dissection that covers the relevant content. The alternate project provided to the student should entail a comparable amount of work to the dissection activity. The responsibility for identifying and providing this alternative should rest with the teacher. This should be relatively easy, as there are many inexpensive and even free web-based interactive dissection programs that cover all of the most commonly dissected animal species. Having the teacher decide the assignment ensures that the alternative meets the class's objectives. Importantly, students who choose a non-animal method should not be punished or discriminated against in any way based upon his or her decision to opt out of animal dissection activities. Many reluctant students decide to dissect due to concerns about being punished or ostracized, and choice policies should assure that this won't happen. Lastly, there should be a formal grievance process for any student who thinks that their concerns about animal dissection have not received proper attention. And I'll leave you with just a short personal experience. When I was growing up in Dexter, I had to dissect a fetal pig, and I had to watch my eighth-grade science teacher dissect a fetal deer, and, you know, these were nearly fully developed animals, and I objected to participating in this, but I took part in it, even though it was really upsetting to me, because there wasn't an alternative, and my grade depended on it. And so that's one of the reasons that I'm a strong advocate of the Board adopting a policy for all students to be able to choose a non-animal method to learn biology. So thank you very much for allowing me to speak with you today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kathy Barker, followed by Mary Starr.
Good afternoon. You ready for a little change in topic? You may or may not know that there is a proposed rule package out by your Office of Special Education. I came to commend the department in the work that they've been doing in this regard, and on behalf of MACE, which is the Association of Special Education Ministers of the State, and my own role as an executive director of special at Oakland, how much we appreciate the extreme, what I would call extreme, efforts that the department has gone to in this rule package over a very long period of time to bring the field up to speed and understanding of what they are proposing in this rule package. I've been doing this work since 1984. I've been in administration. Never have I seen the effort put forth to educate the public and to bring along the field in the way that they have now. Unfortunately, the media is giving a lot of attention to very negative comments about this and making very disparaging remarks about the department. I feel it's very, very unwarranted. And I do believe that a lot of the negativity is coming from just the public's unawareness of how to interpret policy, and how to look at policy and how it's all interrelated. You're hearing a lot about this rule package does this, this, and this, without people understanding it sits inside of an entire Mars set of rules. That's its entirety of an entire federal set of rules that we have to follow. Nothing in this rule package takes away parents' participation from our perspective. Nothing in this gives us the ability to balance our budgets on the backs of children. We can't change class sizes. That's in a different part of the rules package. It's very explicit of what we have to do. We aren't able to, we are not taking away any more rights. As a matter of fact, we would have to say to you, we don't even think this is a very substantive rule package, despite all the attention it's getting. It's really procedural, and the part of the procedure that it most changes, that to me is so critical in all of my experience, is it decouples for parents, in the initial eligibility determination, a time when I'm going to sit with you as a parent, and I'm going to talk to you about your child is disability, and your child's not going to be successful without specialized. That's a big, big deal. Done it hundreds of times. I know how emotional it is. The way we practice now, I believe, we're the only state in the entire country that bundles all of that into, and now let's move on and talk about what we're going to do for your child. This is giving us the time, as per the federal regulation does specify, to sit down and take the time with that parent, really talk about, what are we talking about? What is this going to mean? Of course, you're worried about where your child's going to go. Are they going to graduate? And then give them the time to absorb that, get their consent if they want to move forward or not, and then move to the next phase. So I want to commend you. I want, we want to encourage you to not stop looking at revising. As a profession, we're not where we want to be yet. We are not getting the results for kids with disabilities in the state that we want to be getting. And in order to do that, we have got to be open to really critically looking at, what do we need in a policy infrastructure to allow us to get better results? I can guarantee you, it is not going to cost us a dime less. It is, if we did this right, it's going to cost us as much, and we're going to have as much staff, but hopefully we're going to return the system to really providing for the students in which it was intended for, not for students whom the other parts of the educational system might be failing with, and those are my colleagues. We need to learn how to support them and to build up that side, but we have to stop using special education for the students of what was, it was not intended for, and to revise our system so that we can get better results for our kids. So my mantra right now is really not a dime more or a moment more should be spent on a system that can't get better results. And so I want to embrace the department to go forward, or to really encourage you to go forward, and any way that we can support that policy development work from a professional organization perspective, we will do. We will step up, and we'll help in any way we can. So kudos. You don't always get that as much as you should. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
There's always a first. Thank you.
Mary Starr, and I believe Mary is the final speaker of the day unless someone else has a form.
Thank you very much for your time. I'm Dr. Mary Starr, and I'm the executive director of the Michigan Mathematics and Science Centers Network, and I'm here today to describe to you some of the work of the network that we do to support science and mathematics teachers from throughout Michigan, to really embrace the changing world of teaching and learning. There are 33 regional centers from the Michigan Mathematics and Science Centers Network, and they have several goals. They provide science and mathematics teachers leadership in and curriculum support, focused and sustained professional learning, and science and mathematics opportunities for students and families. The centers also serve as a resource clearinghouse for educational materials and information, fostering community involvement in the areas of mathematics and science. Overall, the goal of the Mathematics and Science Centers Network is to support high-quality math and science education for all students in Michigan. The 33 centers are located throughout the state. Many are housed in the intermediate school districts. Some are at universities, and even others are standalone entities. Four of the centers actually administer their own high school programs in the STEM fields. 27 years ago, the Michigan Legislature funded the network, and that brought the power of the network to the centers and the ability to leverage those resources to support 33 centers' goals. The network implements many statewide programs in math and science for teachers, for students, and for the families. For example, recently, several mathematics and science centers began a collaborative math and science partnership grant that's focused on preparing teachers to use modeling in chemistry and physics classrooms. The network, each one of the centers in the network is now helping to recruit teachers to become part of this really critical need in physics and science classrooms throughout the state. Sometimes we get some real public recognition for the center programs. Last year, the mathematics- Last year, the mathematics-focused, network-wide program called Project Prime won the Michigan Association of School Boards 2013 Best of the Best Award. The network is focused on developing and sustaining science and mathematics teacher leaders in Michigan. Each center has a director who oversees the math and science work within the region, and it also works with the teachers and other consultants to really understand the needs of their region. Last week, science leaders, science educators from throughout the state gathered here in Lansing at the Radisson and the Lansing Center for the Michigan Science Teachers Association meeting. Maybe y'all came. We were all there. This really gave the center directors and many of our consultants an opportunity to show their leadership by presenting at the meeting. It also gave us a chance to really meet, to meet with about 70 of our new, members of our new group called the Michigan Professional Learning Network, or MYSciPLN. Their network is really focused on science leaders and draws together the center directors and consultants, as well as other science and mathematics consultants from throughout the state. The field of education is changing, and our expectations for our students have risen, and what constitutes effective teaching has changed. Michigan needs to really maintain the leadership, particularly in science and mathematics. So the Michigan Science, Mathematics and Science Center Network is really primed to do that kind of work. We've done the same work, only, you know, over the course of the last few years, really focusing on the common core. For the, and in the last 10 years, our financial resources have been pretty much stagnant, even though the needs for science and math teachers have greatly increased. So now, as we start discussing a new vision of science education for Michigan's students, we're really beginning to alter our focus at our centers into science professional development that'll meet the needs for those, of those new standards. The network looks forward to the challenge of those research-based standards and creating science learning experiences for Michigan's students and supporting Michigan's math and science teachers. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe that concludes public participation.
Okay. Most of you see me in my role as State Superintendent. Day to day, I'm actually kind of the CEO of the Department of Ed, and this is always a highlight for us to welcome new employees. They're normally replacements. We don't really have much in the way of new positions, but I'd like to turn it over to Vanessa to make some introductions of our new folks, and then we're going to get to our valued guest.
Good afternoon, and thank you all for allowing us to introduce our employees, our new employees. So we have four. Three are in my division, and then I have the honor of introducing one from Joseph's division as well. So I'll start down at the end. We have Paula Daniels and Alan Thomas, who are in the Office of Field Services. Could you both stand up and tell us a little bit about what you're doing here at the Department?
I'm Paula Daniels, and I am one of the managers for the Office of Field Services. It's great being here. I started out in my career as a Title I teacher, so it's kind of come full circle. I've had an opportunity to be a teacher, central office administrator, and a superintendent, and now I've landed where I was intended to be all of my life.
I'm Alan Thomas. I'm also with the Office of Field Services. The region I represent is Region One, just northern Michigan. My specific territory is the western U-P. And I came from elementary principal background.
Thank you both.
Does that mean you're a Packer fan, or are you?
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome.
We also have Elizabeth Cook. I believe you go by Beth Cook, right? And she is in the Office of Special Education. So tell us a little bit about what you do.
Hi. I'm a policy consultant in the Office of Special Ed, and I'm coming from about 15 years teaching, mostly in juvenile justice and with kids in residential placement through community health.
And Beth has actually come into the unit that is working on the rules package that we just had testimony about, so, you know, she came at a great time.
Yeah.
And then last, this is from Joseph's Division. This is Pedro Semefaro, and he is in the Office of Systems and--
Integration.
Integration. They just changed their name again, and I can't remember what it is. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Okay. I'm Harden, is the Item Bank Specialist. So I came over here from State Police, where I used to run the criminal history database. Now for you, I'm running the database that you used to generate and questions for and make the tests for all the standardized testing. So we found its way out, the tests that are going to come after anything we do with that, we write our own questions in Michigan. We bankwell ourselves, we don't lose time with new contractors. We're going to keep that system running and make it better.
Thank you, Major.
Thank you, Vanessa. And I'm going to, first of all, we have one of America's great mayors with us today, and I'm going to turn it over to our board member extraordinaire, who's going to introduce our guest.
You can come up. I think you have it.
How many did we have? Yeah, we're okay.
May I have you sit there, and I'll sit in front of the machine? Thank you so much.
Great to see you, ma'am.
Good to see you, sir.
Okay, well, ladies and gentlemen, and board members, I am so proud this afternoon to have our mayor, George Hardwell, from Grand Rapids, Michigan, visiting with us this afternoon. And Mayor Hardwell is a mayor of, for the people, by the people, and of the people. And he truly personifies just what I just said. And if you saw the picture just prior to his presentation, he was reading to elementary students. Was that Dr. Seuss time?
Must have been.
It must have been. So anyway, that's an example of he is for the people, and in that case, he was for our young people. He does a lot of, he has a lot of initiatives and programs through the city that incorporate students. As a teacher, I was able to recommend students to the mayor, and he would place them in his initiatives and programs. So with that, I want to welcome our mayor, George Hardwell, and his guest, and he will introduce his guest at this time. Thank you so much for being here.
Well, thank you, Ms. Ramos Marti. It's a pleasure to be here with you. And Superintendent Flanagan and President Austin, board members, thank you so much for time today. And I've brought with me three friends from Grand Rapids. Skipper Nguyen and Hannah Creasy are 11th grade students at City High School in Grand Rapids. And Tia Kabir is a senior, a 12th grade student at the City High. And as I get into this presentation, I'm going to ask each of them to describe certain aspects of the work we do. Grand Rapids, like most cities in Michigan, you know, has a split between our city government and our schools. We have separate administrations and separate governing structures and separate funding And so what I want to talk about today is the way Grand Rapids has found to better integrate those, the work of city and schools, bring them together instead of, instead of what often is characterized in that relationship as tension. In fact, that's where I'll start. In the early, in the early 1970s, there was a significant tension between our city and schools. If there was something to fight over, we would fight over it, you know, tax capture and school building closings, and you name it. It was a tense relationship. During that time, I invited School Board Member Daniel West to join me at a National League of Cities Conference. I was a city commissioner at the time, and it was a National League of Cities, our cities, or your cities' children was the name of the conference. It's held by any, by any league, by the National League of Cities. And Dan and I went to that conference, and we came back just fired up to do something to better integrate the work of our city and our, and our schools. We started by going to our respective governing bodies and asking them to authorize three members from each body to form a liaison committee. That was done in 1993, 1994, and that group continues to meet now, 20 years later. Every other month, three city commissioners, including the mayor, three school board members, including the board president, meet and work through issues that might become problematic between us, might cause tension, or even better, look for opportunities to work together on things that can, where through partnership, we could be, we could be stronger and we could do a better job for the young people in our city. The next thing that that organization did, that task force did, was to form an office of children, youth, and families, a jointly funded, jointly staffed office between the city and the schools that could help carry out the work that we would look to do together as a, as a city in its, in its public school district. When I took office as mayor in 2004, there were still, I would say, some lingering tensions between our organizations, and so my very first State of the City address, when I'd been mayor for all of, all of three weeks, focused on what I felt would be most important to help define my tenure as mayor of that city, whether it was four years or more. And that is the relationship between the city and the schools. That is our children and our young people in Grand Rapids, and what we as a city can do for them. The purpose was to cement that relationship. It was to set some powerful goals, some of which we've accomplished, some of which remain yet to be accomplished. But it is that piece of work that's really driven the kinds of things that the three of us, four of us, are going to talk to you about today. So let me, let me start with, as I describe this work, with a youth master plan that we developed now some four years ago. Funding, national funding, philanthropic funding that came to us through the National League of Cities, one of, I believe it was one of five cities in the country that were funded to do youth master planning, and for a, over a 12-month period, young people, high school students and junior high students, working with a group of adult advisors, developed a master plan for youth in Grand Rapids. And it has proven to be a powerful tool that we've been able to use to really drive much of the work that we're doing, both in city government and in the public schools around our, around our youth in Grand Rapids. It's a blueprint. It seeks to improve outcomes for youth so that they're ready for college and life beyond college. And as I say, it's really driving most of our work. The next thing we want to talk about is, oh, I was supposed to show you that slide when I was talking about the youth master plan. There it is. There it is. Isn't that nice? Now we're going to talk about civic engagement, and specifically about the Mayor's Youth Council. This wonderful group of young people shown here on the slide meet on a regular basis and form both a sounding board for, for me, to reach youth in the community and hear the voice of youth in the community, and an opportunity for the young people. So let me turn to Hannah and Skipper to talk a little bit about their experiences with Mayor's Youth Council.
Well, as Mary said, my name is Skipper Nguyen, and I am the Vice President of the Mayor's Youth Council. I'm also a junior at City High Middle. And through this program, it has expanded my knowledge of the world around me and how city government works. I've been able to sit one-on-one with the mayor and speak with him, and also with the council members, to speak on issues and topics that are related around, like, problems in the, in the government, the city government. Through learning these issues, I was able to work with the commissioners, the city commissioners, on issues facing city government. Working with, this has brought me to work with people my age on these issues that we face, like how we get through college, how, what, what education means to us as a, as a youth group, and how we can address this to the adults of Michigan, of Grand Rapids, of our city, and how they can help us get through college, and include us on issues that pass college and later, later on in our lives and in our careers. We as a platform, we as a council have chosen the platform of voting to be part of our, like, main issues that we want to see go through during our, during our time period of a council, is to get youth involved in voting after high school, getting them registered, getting them informed, and like, getting them informed on issues that they might be voting on when they are 18 and register to vote. And we find this very important because they should be engaged in civil activities to help voice their opinions. And one of these issues, that is our platform. One of the many other works that we also get to work with, we do do a lot of community service work, and another big project we do do is Kids Speak. And I'll hand that to Hannah to talk about.
Hello, honorable members of the State Board of Education. As the mayor said, my name is Hannah Creasy. I'm an 11th grader at City High School, and I am the Secretary of the Mayor's Youth Council. As Skipper was saying, we are doing a program called Kids Speak. We kind of call it our D squared program, which is--
Diploma to Degree.
Diploma to Degree. I'm not actually on that board, but I have a lot to do with organizing the actual planning process. And what we're doing is inviting youth around the area of Grand Rapids and also in the area of Kent to come and apply for one of our scholarships. But what they have to do to do that is write a small--
Testimony.
--testimonial about their own experiences within their education system, the things that they're looking forward to in college, and what they hope to get out of education as a whole, what they hope to give back to their community, which is really what I think the Mayor's Youth Council focuses on, is in our society today, most young people my age and younger do not feel valued, and therefore adopt the mindset that they're too young to contribute anything to their community, which is false. However, the Mayor's Youth Council of Grand Rapids has presented me and all my peers with such an invaluable opportunity, basically the most amazing civics class a kid could ask for. We are given a forum to discuss current issues that are specifically pertinent to our age group, construct solutions, have our voices heard, become politically and socially aware, and most importantly, develop the confidence to be a driving force for change in our communities, whether that be local, national, or global. By participating on the Mayor's Youth Council, I've had the opportunity to spend a day at City Hall, sit in on city commissioner meetings, have group discussions with the mayor, and help develop a platform called Voting 101, which Skipper already talked about. The experiences I've had with the Mayor's Youth Council have been a unique educational opportunity that could only be found outside the traditional school setting. And while during the day I am fortunate enough to be academically challenged, after school, the Mayor's Youth Council complements my education with opportunities such as being taken on a tour of the Gerald R. Ford Museum and listening to debates about up-and-coming city legislation. The Mayor's Youth Council is a program that provides youth with the opportunity to understand their own power as an individual and their personal value to their community. It is an unduplicable benefit to everyone involved. Thank you.
Great. Well done, both of you. Thank you. My notes say, cover anything that Skipper and Hannah didn't cover, but you covered it all, and you covered it well. Thank you. Next, let me say something about after-school activities and our extended learning opportunities. When, in that first State of the City address, when I was a brand-new mayor, the, one of the goals I set was to have a, an after-school program in every single one of our then 42 school buildings. At that point, we had, we had zero. There was no after-school programming activity. We, we, working, working through our liaison committee and our Office of Children, Youth, and Families, we developed a, an after-school program that now includes some 60 partners that are providing after-school programming and that is rigorously evaluated. We're working right now under a-- We're working right now under a grant from the Wallace Foundation to ensure that, you know, that we're measuring what we should measure, that we're truly relentless in doing that, and that we're improving the quality of that program year over year. As you've undoubtedly heard here and know very well from your own personal and direct experience, federal funding for those programs that we depended so on to fund these after-school programs is on the wane. And we've been urging our state legislature and would urge you to join your voice to that request for additional funding to supplement the 21st century federal funding that comes in out of our state treasury. So, an important initiative for us and one that I wanted you to know about, Career to College, Career and College Readiness Goals, some of them are established here. We have a program called To College Through College that brings the higher education community, public schools, city of Grand Rapids, and employers together, working on an initiative to make sure that our students, once they get into college, that they can complete college. It was stunning to see the statistics about, we were feeling pretty good about getting young people into college, but then we saw the completion rates, and we're floored at that. So, we're working on initiatives now that will help our youth actually graduate from college, once they get in. We have a Scholars, Challenge Scholars Program in Grand Rapids funded by the Grand Rapids Community Foundation, which is working on college preparedness, starting at the fourth grade level, and working with young people in the Union High School feeder system to ensure that not only are they college-ready, but that their last-dollar scholarship money's available for them when they go to college. And next, I want to, I want to talk about the Mayor's 50 campaign and the LEED program, and ask Tia to help me out on that. Four years ago, I challenged the business community to hire young people. I said, "Our students ages 15 through 21 that don't have work experience need work experience. They got to see what life is like in a real-world work environment." And so I challenged 50 businesses to join me in this campaign, and I made this pledge to them. If you will hire our youth, we will send you work-ready, workplace-ready, maybe that's a better way to say it, youth, who have gone through a 12-week training program, summer 12 weeks, I think it's 90 hours during the school year, training program to prepare them for the workplace. And then we will pay 50% of their wage for a $10-an-hour wage for up to six months. We've developed a curriculum for this, what we call the LEED program, this preparation program. And I'm not going to go through it there, but I think even better might be for you to hear directly from Tia about her own experience of going through LEED.
As Mayor Hartwell said, my name is Tia Kabir. I was part of the LEED program, and I'm now currently employed at the Grand Rapids Label Company. The Grand Rapids Label Company is a 125-year-old locally and family-owned business. It is an honor working for them, and I would not have been given the opportunity to have a chance to work with them if it wasn't for the LEED program. So, the program is centered around the four terms that make up its name, leadership, employment, achievement, and direction. In the LEED program, participants learn valuable leadership and employability skills. In addition to that, the curriculum is centered around making students more civically engaged. So, from the LEED program, I received guidance on how to write a resume and cover letter. I participate in workshops aimed at helping me become more familiar at how an interview goes, a job interview, or the skills we learned there could also be applied to a college interview. We also had a guest speaker who talked to us about loans and credit scores and other things that would help us become more financially literate. These lessons were extremely valuable to me because the workshops and the lessons were information and education that I would not have otherwise have received from school or at home. At school, I take classes that prepare me for college classes. However, at school, I did not receive lessons on how to present myself in the best possible light to future employers. After college, I will apply for jobs to do with my degree and career choice. I will probably be competing with many people who receive the same education and the same degree as me. I am sure that the possibility in getting an interview will in many times be determined just by looking at a resume and cover letter. So, by getting help in understanding how to write a good one and how to best present myself, I was quite fortunate. The financial literacy workshops that I partook in help me now, as I get my results back from FAFSA. College is quite expensive, and sometimes it's very confusing to figure out how to fund it. So, in short, the LEED program has taught me how to use the knowledge that I learned in school to better present myself in today's competitive job market during or after college. The LEED program has helped me as I strive to become a young adult that is an asset to my community.
That's great. Tia's been accepted, as I said, as a senior, she's been accepted at Central Michigan University and Ohio University. You can imagine where I'm encouraging her to attend. But I'll come back to you in just a second, Tia. Here's a list of the Mayor's 50 businesses. Again, I won't go through that, but you can, if you just quickly peruse, you see there's a variety, from law firms to manufacturers to nonprofit organizations, city government itself, banks, and even the YMCA and Grand Valley State University. The students that participate have, as Tia said, some wonderful work experiences that they come out of LEED and they go into these jobs. You interview for the job, right?
Yes.
And then, once you're on the job, you've been working there how long at Grand Rapids Label?
I started working there in August, and they were satisfied with me, so I will be working up until I leave for college.
That's great. That's great. And could you just, maybe a couple of things, Tia, that you, benefits that you've found from your work at Grand Rapids Label?
Well, my official title is an office intern, and what that actually means is I make copies, I put information to databases, I do filing, but I also partake in projects that I know what's going on. For example, my first project was making their paper-oriented filing program in one of their departments be paperless and more electronic-based for more ease of access and also an environmental aspect. So, what's best about me working there is, because it's a locally-owned business, it's quite successful. I've always had an interest in businesses and how they run because I've had an interest in entrepreneurial studies and things of that nature. So, my job there allows me to see how a business is run, a very successful business is run, the inner workings of it, the microscopic aspects of it, and I would not have otherwise known about it.
Great. Thanks, Tia. So, this program got some presidential recognition last year when I was invited to join two other mayors in the White House on a nationwide conference call to businesses and local governments on youth employment programs, President Obama's Summer Jobs Plus Initiative that you may remember from last year. Here are some other quotes coming out of, there's Tia up there at the top and other students that have come through the program. And we think, now we have served 275 youth through this LEED program and Mayor's 50. We just got a wonderful grant from the Kellogg Foundation that will, that's a two-year, $175,000 grant to allow us to serve another, I think it's 150 youth. All of this is funded, I should mention, including the wages that we pay out of philanthropic resources. And we, like every other city in the state of Michigan, funds are tight, municipal funds are tight, but we've been very effective in raising money from the private sector and philanthropic sector. So with that, those were the things I wanted to talk to you about. We'd be, I know any of us would be happy to respond to any questions or comments that you might have. And once again, we're just delighted to be here with you today. Thanks so much.
Thanks so much, Mayor. And what a great model program. And we'll start, I was thinking of Kathleen Strauss, by the way, because a lot of what you're describing, Kathleen Strauss has talked about for quite a while in terms of the city-school partnership. And so, first question to you, ma'am.
Thanks, Mike. Well, it's a pleasure to have you here.
Thanks, ma'am.
Our honor, and I appreciate what you're doing. I'm going to go home and talk to Mike Duggan about this. I hope he'll listen. But this is something that we've talked about for a long time. First of all, after-school, I was talking about full-day, full-school programs and having the school buildings open all day and into the evening, and be hubs for their community, with then putting government services in those buildings, maybe even. Maybe you could have kept school districts, school buildings, open if they were receiving resources from other agencies in addition to the schools. But that's a little off the subject. But these programs are wonderful, and the experience that all of you are getting is invaluable, that you know you're going to be able to go into some company and explain how to go paperless, do it for them. That's really remarkable for a young, you know, a young person, not even in college yet. It's just wonderful. So, I think that this kind of a program of involving the city and the school district, working hand-in-hand, is absolutely essential, because the city will thrive without a good school system. The school system will thrive without a supporting city.
We agree entirely.
So, it's the ideal way to go. So, thank you very much for sharing it with us.
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming, Ms. Strauss. I remember at that very first National League of Cities Conference that I referred to, meeting a couple from Albuquerque, New Mexico. He was a city council member, she was a school board member. They were a married couple, and they had schemed, I guess, maybe pillow talk or whatever, but they had been able to launch an initiative to put after-school programming in every school in Albuquerque. And I said, "If Albuquerque can do that, we can do it in Grand Rapids." And any city can do it. It's the will. It takes the will to do it.
As with everything.
As with everything, yes, indeed. Yes, indeed. Thank you. Dan, and then Lupe.
So, thank you. This was great. And actually, it brings me back to my former life a little bit. So thoroughly enjoyed the presentation. Thank you. So, I have two questions, one for the mayor and one for our student, student presenters. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm curious about whether you've, as you've explored these various partnerships with the schools, if you've been able to develop partnerships kind of beyond programming. So, have you gotten to the point where you were able to, just throwing out examples, just to make the point clear, got to the point where you were able to staff school buildings after-school hours with recreation department personnel? Or combine, so you talked about this new department, the jointly-staffed and funded Office of Children, Youth, and Families, right? Does that office actually, so I know in Milwaukee, for example, there's this, they actually send recreation department staff to buildings after hours and jointly cover the utility expenses associated with keeping those buildings open and so on. Have you gotten to that point in partnership?
No, no, we haven't. Really, when we talk about partnership with the public schools, we're often, including the private sector, both for-profit and nonprofit sector, as the third partner in that relationship. And so, rather than staffing with recreation staff, city recreation staff, that we don't have anymore, we turn to the private sector. And so, it's the Campfire Girls, it's the YMCA and the YWCA, it's the Boys and Girls Clubs that are coming in under the mantle and the umbrella of our Extended Learning Opportunities, ELO network, and sort of adhering to the standards that we set for after-school instruction through the network. But we have not, we've not gone in the direction that Milwaukee has. The office itself, which has been renamed in recent years to Our Communities' Children, has a staff of two, and they are, they initially were jointly funded by the city and the schools, 50% from the school's general fund budget, 50% from the city's general fund budget. But they've been so successful in philanthropic fundraising that now they're basically off of our books, which is even better. Thank you.
Speaking of money before the second question, so congratulations on a grant from the Wallace Foundation, which I think is not an easy thing to do. They're pretty research-driven, if I am thinking of the right foundation. And so, I think it's a real credit to you that you were able to get grant money from the Wallace Foundation. And I know the Ford Foundation, for future reference, is very interested in More and Better, More and Better, I forget, More and Better something they call it. It has to do with, like, out-of-school, like, continuing education beyond the last school then.
We're all for More and Better.
More and Better, that's right. More and Better, everything. We're all, More and Better, for all. So, the quick question for the students, there's this program called Linked Learning out in California that's gotten rave reviews nationally, and it places students kind of at, have these workplace experiences, and then they link the workplace experience to what's going on in school, so that, I don't have a great example, but if you're studying, they're themed, I mean, I get lost in that and just get to the question, which is, what, so, when you come back from the Grand Rapids Label Company and you're back in school, just tell us a little bit about what the connection is between the two for you. So, you're sitting in science class, or English class, or math, or what have you. Are you able to transfer, like, what you're seeing at the workplace to school, or what you're seeing at school to the workplace? Like, what's the relationship between those?
Well, I don't learn biology at the Grand Rapids Label Company, but at school, we are taught to better your communication skills between who's higher up, in this case would be your teacher, and what you yourself have to do. And that I took into my job. For example, if I'm given a project and I'm the only one doing the project, I can't turn around in the middle of it and go up to somebody and ask them to help me with it. I have to, at the very beginning of the project, I have to ask all the questions. I have to be inquisitive, I have to make notes, I have to perhaps think ahead of what will happen. And that's what I have to do in school. We in school, as a general skills, we have to learn how to take good notes, we have to learn how to be the first person to ask questions, we have to learn how to network properly, communicate properly, and I take that into work, and I take from work, I take that from work to school, just being the first person to be inquisitive and ask what to do, communication.
Great. Thank you.
Are you available for an internship here? You sound like you have it down pat.
You'll pay your college tuition.
Well, we could get a grant from Kellogg with some of our old connections to do that. John, please.
Well, one, it's great to see young people, I just want to note and kind of applaud your leadership and engagement, taking advantage of this kind of program to build your own skills and networks, et cetera. But I know it takes some leadership to get these things going. Mayor, you're creating the conditions that allows this environment and these kind of activities to be created and nurtured and deployed in the community is really admirable. And I, Lou, your friend Lou Glazer, and mine, sent around your State of the City speech most recently, which was wonderful. I recommend it, I'm sure it's online somewhere. The Mayor's State of the City speech is inspiring and it's tangible in terms of the many ways Grand Rapids has evolved for the better and the different dimensions of that. And your fingerprints are all over that, it's a lot of your handiwork with a great community. So, I wanted to ask you, your agent here, Ambassador St. Bay, has a reason why he feels like caught up with all of the innovations that are coming out of Grand Rapids? So, we had your superintendent and folks in talking about the agenda for remaking the schools of the moment, which was certainly exciting and powerful. How does, what they're going through now to try to create a whole, you know, new fabric of learning environments, it sounds like, how does it fit with this type of initiative? And how do you gauge the progress of the schools themselves in building effective learning environments, which is, you know, not an easy road to travel in any of our urban communities? communities?
No, it certainly isn't. So, you know, Grand Rapids Public Schools is going through their own organizational transformation efforts right now. City of Grand Rapids, you know, is four years into what we call our transformation work that was funded under a five-year sunsetted income tax increase. And so, we're sort of walking alongside each other in that process. The superintendent, Neil, Teresa Weather O'Neill in Grand Rapids, has brought new energy, has been able to coalesce a school board in a way that we haven't seen for some time. They're pulling in the same direction. We all think it's a pretty exciting time for the Grand Rapids Public Schools. One of the initiatives that they will launch next year is a public school, rather than a charter school, museum school program that will start with, I believe it starts with sixth grade and then adds a grade each year, six through 12, in partnership with Ferris State University Kendall College in Grand Rapids, and the Grand Rapids Public Museum and the city of Grand Rapids. That's one of their initiatives, they're working with, closely with Spectrum Health on a, on another initiative with a school that's a health-based, I think it's high school, nine through 12 program. There's, you know, they've got the sixth-grade environmental programs, and they're looking to expand that now to a six-12 environmental program. So, I think if I'm responding to your question, President Austin, it's, you know, I'm encouraged right now with the, with the work that's being done in the Grand Rapids Public Schools. We've had some challenges, obviously. We, our Union High School was on the lowest 5% list for three years running, and the superintendent and I asked to, in effect, take that over and put together a governing board that she and I co-chair. We pulled it off this past year, off the lowest 5%, and we're proud of that, but it's got a long way to go. And, you know, that's a, that's a challenge for us. Graduation grades, a real challenge for us. We gotta get these kids graduated.
Follow-up to John's, Mayor, if I may, that I think you met my son Brian, who used to be the assistant director at the Howenstein Presidential Center, is at U of M now, boo. But he, but he, oh, but, but I really think Leves would fit in nicely with that museum program, especially on the social studies side. They're rich in resources for, for the museum program. And then, secondly, thank you very much for that partnership on taking a school that was labeled, you know, under federal law, it's an unfortunate label in one sense, but moving it off. And we were just talking earlier today about how many schools like yours have done that. They've done the hard work, and it's very difficult with some of the conditions that you inherit when you, when you are willing to step up to that challenge. So, thank you for that.
You want some EAA school?
No, no, thank you. But you, I mean, you gave us, you gave us the tools to work with, too. And so, I was part of, I set aside two days and was part of an interview process. We interviewed every teacher, and we laid, we transferred or let go 50% of the instructional staff from that school under, under the guidelines. And, and we interviewed, and we pulled together a team that is so fired up about, you know, bringing Union back, that it was, it was an important tool to have. You can't just walk in the door and say, "Well, we're not gonna really change anything," but you gotta do better. So, thank you for the tool.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am?
And I guess I'll finish the conversation. You know, Cesar Chavez says, "History is made a step at a time." So, in Grand Rapids, that's what we're doing. We're making history a step at a time. Yes, we have had challenges, big challenges, but I have, I have said at this table many, many times, that it takes a village to educate a child. And doing that, this is exactly what the mayor is doing with all these different programs. And so, we're, the mayor, and what we're doing to increase the achievement of our students is not to supplant what the legislature is supposed to be doing, but to supplement what the legislature is supposed to be doing for our schools. So, we are ready to lock arms with the legislature in doing all these different programs in behalf of our children, because it takes a village to educate a child. And so, we are very cognizant of that. I am very, very proud of Mayor George Hardwell and the students. You did marvelous. As a teacher, I would give all of you an A+. And so, and I thank you very, very much. I know the mayor has had a meeting this morning, he has his commissioners meeting tonight, but he sees that this was very, very important to come and showcase what's happening in the city in behalf of our children. And you have seen that they are achieving. So, I please welcome all of you to help me give a big round of applause to Mayor Hardwell and our special guest.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having us today.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Now, the exciting approval of minutes. Can I have a motion? Moved by Dan.
Support.
Moved by Cassandra. Any discussion?
Low blood sugar.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same. Just a form there. Thank you. And President's report, just in time.
I was going to note for Lupe, since we're ahead of schedule. Congratulations. Imagine that.
Well, thank you, sir. You helped this morning enormously, trust me. I was hoping you would...
I had, I had, like, five conversations with the brilliant Dr. Arson about 20 minutes. And I heard you talk a long time at the other meeting, just last week. All right, well...
Good info.
So, one, on the kind of discussions we're having around the issues in school organization spending, I, I've talked sometimes publicly, it is important that we work on this. As you can see, I am concerned that the kinds of either contradictory policies, or need of updating policies, or sometimes lack of policy in the funding model, really is beginning to affect student outcomes, achievement, and the kind of sluggish, if it's a generous term, scores that we're seeing, and outcomes we're seeing. So, that is why we need to engage in this, and we're gonna, everybody will wrestle with what themes and major issues come out for everybody, I certainly. And next week, the next time we're here from the MacInnis Center and other folks, are whole different themes and perhaps analysis, too. And it's important that we honestly look at all, all sides of the discussion and different perceptions of what's wrong. I certainly feel like, for me, you know, a couple things keep jumping out. One is this issue of matching resources to both costs and needs to provide support for success, you know, the fact of resources apply differentially, where we have kids that are in poverty, or that have, need extra attention. And there is, I had another study that I referenced, that someone sent me, oh, it was Kevin Holland, back at the Upjohn Institute, said, the, this was in Ed Week, the Boston Consulting Group did a pretty rigorous analysis of what leads to achievement and outcomes. And in addition to things that Dr. Arson was saying about spending matters, but the more important thing is how you spend the money matters, and that sufficient resources to have the same chance to succeed in terms of poor students having differential support for things that help them succeed academically was, was powerful in terms of improving outcomes. So, I mean, those, that's one set of understandings for me. Another is, TRC and others were talking about this issue of either a mixed strategy, or Dr. Arson, a non-strategy, and how we're opening new schools and have choice while having declining enrollments, and we need to consolidate. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of issues there around having a more coherent strategy so that the collective effort of a marketplace, or choice, or charters adds up to better education. And finally, I would just note, for me, what's been most telling and new to some, though I was personally getting educated on this, this last year, just the overall level of effort that we as a state have been putting into education and higher education, the share of our income tax, our personal income, that we're spending to support education has dropped like this, the headly dive, nosedive, from being close to the headly bump, which is legitimately of concern, to $8 billion under, that we have not been willing to tax ourselves or spend on education, Adam, time, when we're all in a public debate about, are we spending enough? And yes, we're spending more. We have just, over time, diminished significantly our support, what we're willing to support for education, pre-K, higher ed, the whole thing, and...
Talk a good game.
So, anyway, those, we'll wrestle more with this stuff, but I just, I do think it's telling, important, and helpful to have these different perspectives, and I really appreciate the time that people are willing to put into it, and we'll work together on it. Two, I mentioned to Mike, I hope he'll talk some about the special education rule-making process. There certainly, I mean, people who we know well and trust their judgment, like Liz Bauer and others, there's obviously concern about the substantive changes that may be behind this set of rule changes. Certainly concern about whether people are having their voice heard, and their concerns heard. And whatever we do, I think collectively, as you know, we need to try to make sure we are providing an environment in which people feel like they're being heard, and feel as if they are having their, their issues considered and reflected on, and then that that whole process is one that people feel has been allowing them to participate. So, however that can work, because even if it's real or perceived substantive changes, or it's real or perceived no time, or mechanisms of input, the perception is reality in this, in this kind of environment. We need to encourage the condition that people perceive that they have the opportunity and that their perspective was considered fully. Three, I hope under the legislative discussion, we can talk more about the school turnaround strategy for the state. I don't know if there's any legislation either needed or prospective that is close to what we were recommending, which is, with Mike, we need some effective options to have entities that, whether they be ISDs, other school districts, nonprofit organizations, charter networks, that are either already have a good record of turnaround schools, and/or can be likely to have success in turnaround schools. We have a, you know, EAA that, despite some of us wanting it to be succeed, has engendered lots of complication oppositions, and is not succeeding yet, certainly. We have legislation with Democrats, Ellen Lipton has proposed, that include ISDs, but, you know, it's sort of fulsome, helpful audits of the special circumstances of how to treat schools under special circumstances, with their unique situation, that though, you know, in my view, is that more than what we already do with ISDs now, under the different turnaround strategies? And does it include some end game that insists that something very different happens in the educational lives of the kids in those schools? If any legislation could get to that clarity, and have good options that are going to be effective to educate kids, I'm for it. Not every ISD may be effective, not every school district, not every charter network. So, we need to somehow encourage effective turnaround strategies to be animated. And I don't know where we are in this state right now. So, I hope we'll talk more about that. And also, whether we can just do it right now, under Mike's authority, under the law, and have our school reform office set clear criteria of who's eligible to take over other schools. But if we do that, we have to make sure there's not legislation that is legislating something different, like they all have to go in the EAA, or they all have to go over here, or they all have to go to ISDs as the only option, when maybe the ISDs, not in every case, are gonna be effective. So, you know, this is, this is important, and we need to make our best effort to encourage the right outcome. Finally, we've had a good informal committee, Dan, Eileen, and Kathy, who've been discussing and talking to other people, too, about an effective search for Mike's replacement timeline process. And while I know we're not ready to kind of lay that all out, I want to ask Dan to at least just mention a next step in that, because I think there's some things we need to clarify before we do as a board formally lay out the process and begin that process, hopefully, as soon as we have that clear roadmap in front of us and everybody's agreed.
So, we will look to, I owe Kathy and Eileen, who've been wonderful partners in the effort to research kind of what other states are doing, and get recommendations from other associations around the country and so on, a, another draft of our, we're working, we're working through, through the process to get to recommendations. Let's leave it at that. So, hopefully, we'll have something for everyone before the next meeting. In the meantime, one of the things that we are unanimous and clear about is the need to actually get some guidance from the Attorney General on the constraints imposed by the Open Meetings Act on that process. And our recommendation, frankly, to you, is that that discussion be an open discussion, that we actually have somebody from the AG office here to talk. And that way, it's not just for our benefit, but everyone who cares about this process will know what the, kind of what the rules of the game are, if you will. And so, I think what we want to land with all of you is the recommendation that we request somebody from the AG's office come and chat with us about the Open Meetings Act constraints and implications on a search process, and that we do that as soon as possible.
Good. John? Good?
Talk about the open meetings, that could should be in an open meeting.
It should be in an open meeting, right.
By the way, if I had to disclose at an open meeting during my interview that I was fired from McDonald's, I think that needs to be an open for the next person, too. Don't spare the humiliation.
I have a question.
Yes.
To the chair, to Dan. So, who's gonna make the contact with the Attorney General's office? And Quinn, are you anticipating to do that?
So, my assumption is that somebody from the department will be able to do that?
Yeah.
And can we do, we need to do that before the next meeting? And can, again, this is a question of rules of the road, can, can we have a meeting in which some board members, an open meeting, whatever that is, to talk to the AG? Does it have to be a posted meeting? Do we have to have a quorum in person? Can people phone? It's gonna be a lot easier if we set a time and date, and then people are able to participate electronically if they can. But I just don't know what's permitted under the scenarios that we're talking.
It could also be at next month's board meeting.
Yeah, but I think, I'm certainly encouraging us to have a little more agreement, hopefully, maybe at next month's meeting, on the process from here.
So, you thought you'd do this before the next, and have the process...
Yeah, the process for the search process, in terms of what that's gonna look like, versus having just the discussion with the AG, and then another month to map out, agree on the search process.
We could, Mertz and I, we could help coordinate a time that you could have, let's say, a call with some in person, with open meetings. Another option, and not a better one necessarily, but would be to understand your questions more clearly in writing, submit them to them. I mean, that's another option if logistics become an issue. I'm not, because, for example, I'm not clear on what, and maybe you're not ready to clarify that either, but clear on what, I mean, you can't have the interviews privately, the interviews would have to be in public.
I think, and Dan, if I'm talking out of school, part of what I think the informal committee is likely to recommend is that, you know, the process, the search process include the full board. So, that, including of the full board, otherwise you have to revisit with whoever wasn't involved, you know, the same issues. How does one conduct a search process with the full board? How does one conduct a search process with the full board?
Okay.
In respect to the Open Meetings Act? And, or this is a personnel decision, and I mean, U of M just pulled off a pretty sneaky, I mean, an effective, an effective search process which was hidden from view largely in terms of it was not aired out to.
Right, but we're under different rules.
And whatever they are, we want to know, abide by them, model them in terms of openness.
I guess that's what I meant. I, I'm not hearing you say you didn't want to have the interviews in public, or is that what you're?
So I, I don't know that I have a preference. I'm sure that if we talked it out, we would decide, you know, there's some folks who might not want to know, that might want their names out there as candidates unless they actually were a finalist, so on and so forth. I just don't, we don't even know what the rules of the game are with regard to the Open Meetings Act. And so I think that there may be a follow-up that we need to have with them after we get the basic rules of the game, but just to get the basic understanding about this is what you've got to know, right? And then we could, as we were talking through a potential process and what that might look like, there might be further follow-up questions as a result.
Why don't we, please?
The conflict between wanting to have privacy for the candidates who might be at a job, and they don't want anybody to go to apply for another job at this, at this point, unless they have a good chance of getting it. And we are under the Open Meetings Act, which says we have to do everything in the open. So how do you balance these two?
Know if there are exceptions for?
Personnel decisions.
For even, prior to being a finalist, for instance, is it not foible so they can keep
their privacy? And then if they're a finalist, so be it. Then you've got to be willing to step forward. We'll arrange a time, we'll work out with you and see logistics of a time that, and you'd like the entire board to be available for that interaction with the AG?
Is that, or is that your?
You know, that's a great question. We hadn't talked about that. I think it would be vast if everybody could join, if, we could also make it voluntary and kind of report back to folks, but I don't want us to be in a situation where people who were not able to join the call don't.
Feel like they missed something?
Yeah, exactly.
Or feel that they weren't heard? I think that.
Why don't we shoot for trying to get a time? I think the AGs are fairly flexible. You know, they've got their issues too, but if we went out a few weeks before the next meeting, I think we could work a time that everyone's available. Let's shoot for that.
At least the new place of the committee and everybody else who can participate.
Who can. Okay, great. Okay, let's see, I don't want to do special ed first. I want to kind of work into that. Although I'd like to do it before Kathy leaves, so thank you, Kath. We have been, you know, it hasn't even really, I always say this, we have, on one sense, worked on this for 18 months, on the other sense, have gone through a comment period, I guess I will go right into it, on the special ed rules. I don't even see these until the comment period and the hearings are over. So a little bit, I ended up calling into Channel Four last night, because they had this thing totally backwards. I talked to Marty this morning to get to them, that it was almost, they were inferring that, we can't believe that someone's here not to answer. Well, the way the process works is, I have the authority for rulemaking, I have the authority for rulemaking, and the, and the bottom line is that one wouldn't want to, based on not having comments and hearings in place first, make determinations about the rules. So it, the way it was sounded in the media and the way I think some of the, well-intentioned, I mean, I don't question at all the fears. I mean, I, I've been in the field, and I said to some of our team who've also been in the field, but parents of special, you know, of our special kids, there's always reason to have concern that is something else going on. It's a little bit, when we take a deep breath, because we're somewhat defensive about that, because frankly, everyone in our special ed department, as an example, these are people who have dedicated their whole lives to these kids. So it's hard not to be, as well as I have frankly, if that's self-serving or not. So it's a little, it puts us a little bit on our heels to kind of hear that, as if, what are they trying to do? On the other hand, I get it, in the sense that this is very important in the lives of these children and the families. And so there's reason for them to want to make sure this is fair and done right. But all I would say, I guess, is I, I, that's the reason, I'm not even involved until the comment period's over, the hearings are over, which were just yesterday, so they're not even close to being recorded. I think we have over 1,000 comments. I don't know how many between the two hearings, I haven't had an update yet, but anyone sense of numbers of the hearings yesterday?
It was about 14 hearings, so that was actually a really good turnout for public hearings.
For public hearings. Normally they're not. And so here's the thing, I mean, I certainly want to honor, as you see fit, and as we see fit, I'd like to honor the spirit behind understanding what folks think time hasn't been allowed. In other words, let me say that maybe a better way. As I saw this, I was out last week, when I came back and saw kind of the ketchup, actually I was reading it, as you know, and interacting last week with the media, and then it's going, turn that off, turn that off. But I, I was a little shocked, because I thought we're not even there yet, and it was really taking a life of its own. And then I heard a radio interview on the way home last night with, you know, people from the advocacy committee, community that were concerned. But two things, one is, that's the purpose of having comment period and hearings, is to understand those issues so that you can, we don't have to move all these rules forward. And I would say, for example, without even getting defensive about, this is something about caseloads, I wouldn't move anything, I would make that commitment openly, to just end the argument. If somehow buried in there was a way to sneak through caseload changes, I wouldn't move the rule. And so to the degree that there's probably comments along those lines, because, you know, people like edit, are concerned that is there something else going on? But what I'm not clear on is the timing issue. See, we, if we don't do this, it would cost a year. So I'm trying to understand what between now and next Thursday, which is the end of the comment period, that we couldn't learn to inform our decision about the rules? What is it that we couldn't learn by then? I think we've learned it all frankly, but what might it be that we couldn't learn by Thursday, worst-case scenario, that instead we'd have to take another year?
Please.
Yes, please, that would be helpful.
You know, I guess there's just questions I have. So why, what is the rationale to change what we have right now? And I think people don't understand the rationale, like, well, why was there a need to change and to take Michigan rules, which are generally stronger and better than federal rules, and align them, which they see as a lowering? Now, you can get into all the, you know, point-by-point specifics that have been brought up. Also, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a special ed teacher, I'm just a parent of special ed. When I saw the changes, and there were several pages of just this paragraph changed for that paragraph, and I sent it out to people, I said, I feel as, I should advocate for special ed. Can you help me decipher this? Because as a special ed parent, I don't understand what they're doing, or why they're doing it. Can you let me know your opinion to see if it's good or bad? So I think because it was presented in such a sort of, to me, and maybe it was because people didn't think it was any big deal, that, as, it was really incomprehensible to me as it was presented. So I think sometimes people can infer that that's a bad motive, that there's something. So if it had been more clearly communicated to the special ed community, what the changes are, why we need to change what we have already, and I, I think people are just still starting to become aware of exactly what does this mean? You know, these little, you know, and I know Marcy Lipsit is, you know, has pointed out very detailed changes, and even looking at them, I'm like, so what, I don't, I still don't understand. So I guess I'm saying all this to say, I think people really, you know, it's a hard enough battle out there with the rules we have right now as parents of special needs kids, and we're not getting the funding, as was noted earlier, fighting for every single service that we can get. A lot of parents not even being aware of their rights. So when there's a change, it really needs to be carefully communicated.
Okay, let me try to answer that, and I'll probably need some help. So Vanessa, why don't you come on down? Because as I said, I purposely, to some degree, for the last 18 months, have kept myself away from some of this so that I'm in a position where I can look at the comments and the hearings fairly and compare them to what the rules are requesting. But I think it's a fair question.
Yeah, I was just, even that would be perhaps very helpful, just to communicate now, or?
That being?
Meaning that these are proposed changes that were developed by whom? You know, I'm not sure. In order to accomplish certain things. You, as the ultimate person going to be, either, you know, either making these changes or not, are, are interested in a, what are people's reactions, are going to be thoughtful about whether there are real or perceived changes that diminish services that people are seeing in these proposed changes? That if you reflect on that, you're still in a position to potentially change these rules. I mean, just even that fact or that information would be helpful to reiterate, and that you're going to be looking at what people say, this really could be a diminishment of services if it were true, and that's one that I'm not going to include, you know, that that might be a potential outcome, or the perceptions that these are sort of moving through to be slammed on.
If I may, before you go, let me try to answer the.
Yeah, if we could just, why did they have to be changed?
I heard that, that's what we're going to try to answer. That's what we're going to try to answer.
So the, let's start with the question of why they had to be changed. I think, I think one important kind of meta point is that, of course, in the field of education, we need to assess ourselves, continuous improvement, and improve the delivery of our services to all our students, not only our students with disabilities. And so the act of looking at the rules periodically, reflect against the IDEA standards, but also against good practice. I mean, we wouldn't want to necessarily keep a rule in place from the 1980s when we know much more about educating students now than, students with disabilities especially, now than we did in the 80s. So they needed to be changed because we needed to go through that periodic alignment. We also spent, I can appreciate that for some portions of the special education community, it appears that they came out of nowhere. And so we, I think, can, can continue to work on our process about how we keep people informed. But we did spend 18 months in the field before we got to this kind of formal public comment. This is actually the end of a very long process, we had testimony that reflected that as well, where we spent time with parents, with parent advisory councils, with ISDs, with districts, with the Michigan Association of Administrators of Special Education, with lots of groups of people talking about the current rules and what could be better. It's all in the, certainly in no way do we want to decrease or diminish services to students with disabilities, we want to make them better. We want our students with disabilities to have better outcomes, all of our students to have better outcomes. So, you know, we did, we did talk with people a lot getting to the rules. This, when you get then down to a set of proposed rules, you enter this fairly prescribed, not by us, rulemaking process, which is what we're engaged in now. But as Mike said, the public comment part is critically important. We've received over 1,400 comments to date. We will analyze every comment for support or support modifications or don't support. All the rules will be reflected on that. That's the report that will go to Mike before we move it further in the rulemaking process. So we're really excited about the level of engagement in the public comment, because it helps us get better, so.
Well, my feeling from talking to people in different organizations is that, and particularly parent organizations, is that they are unaware. So even though there may have been a select group of people who were in the process for 18 months, there is a lot of people who are completely unaware and are, and I think that that process of explaining and getting feedback from them, to have them participate in the process and understand the process, and to be assured, I mean, because, I mean, there are.
Let's, if I may, just so we can get one at a time here.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
So what would be? No, I think you're making a good point, I'm trying to get a chance that you could, so the parent groups in some of those subgroups were?
The, like, parent advisory councils at the ISDs, but you make a good point that getting to parents of all of our 200,000 special education students.
Eleanor, come on.
Can be challenging, you know? So we could expand our reach, or we could, we could do other things going forward. I would note that this public comment period, again, is the time when we want to make sure we get this very broad statewide reach that everybody has a chance to comment.
So but the, as I, and there's been criticisms about the public comment period. Number one, it was between, like, the meetings themselves were between nine and five, or 10 and five. So a lot of people who teach, a lot of parents who work, couldn't attend. And so, and it was only in two cities, Detroit and Lansing. And there was, and I mean, maybe you can respond to this, but.
But can I, Michelle, Mary?
Well, the, then that the, how to submit was very difficult to submit online, and you couldn't just send a direct email or something like that.
Well, we actually added send an email or mail as an option.
Okay.
In response to concerns. Again, 1,400 and counting public comments is the best response to public comment we've had before. So the online system has been really successful in terms of.
Can you identify who's making the comments? Or, I mean, because one of the things I was told is, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to rapid fire you, but.
We don't validate, we don't say you can't make a comment. So I know there's been people saying, well, I went in and commented 10 times. We can, and we can look at that, but we don't require any sort of validation, because we want everybody to legitimately be able to comment. We don't want restrictions on who can do it.
Right. So I just want to make sure that doesn't skew, like, so if somebody wanted to, let's say, just say it's the greatest thing since I read, and, and then, right?
Or if they wanted to submit negative comments.
You know, it's like, you, there's no sort of, this was sort of the criticism, is that there's no way to validate who is making.
This is true of all rulemaking. In theory, there could be skewing and organized, there is organized. I mean, the petitions are enormous, so it's obviously organized, but if anything, it tends to be organized right now, a little bit skewed one way. So I mean, I, I think what we try to do is make judgments about that. We doubled the number of places, we doubled the amount of times that we, that we require.
I know, so the double number.
We don't have to do two places, we can do one, and we don't have to have this long a period of comment. We increased the time of comment. Based on some feedback, didn't we move to, I know this wasn't ideal, and turns out, I thought it would be as simple as just tell someone to extend the hours till nine o'clock. It turns out it's not. Then you have to go through the legal process again, go across the street to J. Car, or wherever the heck it is, and republish. So I mean, you know, that, we have decided, and mentioned it in the mid-month, that that's going to be a standard part of our practice, is to make sure those hours are longer. Having said that, I mean, my, still my most basic question is, with all of the fervor around this, legitimate, I'm trying to acknowledge it, I get it, why people would want to be sure if something else isn't going on. Having said that, I, I'm still not clear on what can't be said or given to us by Thursday in comments that would help us inform the rulemaking.
Well, my question is, why can't, why does it have to be done this year if we've lived with it for this long? Why can't we, even if it, because you're saying we'll lose a year, or why can't the comment period be extended? Why is it, why must it be Thursday? And I mean, there's been a number of national organizations.
But if I may ask, I'm still trying to understand what can't be done by Thursday. So let's assume we could.
Well, I think fully informing the, the parents of special, of special needs kids and special ed kids, I think it's not going to be done by Thursday.
There were two things that you, that you made comment, which is why I came to the table. The first one is we did not just talk to professional organizations of administrators and teachers, we went to parent advisory committees across the state in the evening. And so there were parents that we did discuss this with prior to the comment period. And so we made a point of making sure that we educated parents that came out to those meetings, so that they would have that information, so that they could share it within their communities. We also met with advocacy groups, who are not our advocacy groups, they're advocacy groups for students and families. And so we did share that information with them as well. The one comment that has been consistent throughout with our professional community is we have never been as prepared as we were this time in terms of moving throughout the state to make sure that we shared the information. Public comment is for both support as well as opposition. You also asked how many people came out to public comment yesterday? There were 30 people total in Detroit yesterday. I was there for the entire public comment period. There were 24 in Lansing. So I just wanted to share that information, because that was a question that came up. What I read in the newspaper was that all the comments were negative. That's not true. All the comments were not in opposition, I took notes. Most people who do come out to public comment offer negative comments. That's, but many of the comments were support but this change, which is exactly what public comment is about. It is a process, and I think it is so important to respect the process. One of the things that I said to educators across the state, it was one of the things that I think that I did not do well as a public educator. I sat back and let people at Michigan Department of Education make decisions, because I made assumptions that they knew what I knew sitting in a school district. And I have been in front of audiences, every audience, including Rose Point last night at nine o'clock, to say, it is critical to go on the website, look at the videos that explain the rationale for why changes were being proposed, proposed changes, and to make sure they make comments. make sure they make comments, whether they're in support or in opposition, or if they're in support with changes, with suggested changes." I think respecting the process is what's important.
John.
And I, we assume and know that everybody here is wanting to make any changes to support better outcome. But we just have to be hypersensitive to the reality. And we just heard presentations this morning, which basically said the financial costs of special education are monumental and are very challenging for school districts to deal with. And so, there is always a concern, given that reality, and lack of federal, enough federal money, and just the financial implications, which are mushroomed, that any changes that may be made that appear to give flexibility are stalking horses for ways to save money. So, that just reality of the incredible financial costs of special education, the lack of available resources, and the anxiety around, from parents and others, that somehow this is something that is designed to save money and then diminish services for my child or children like mine, is just, you know, that's real. So, we have to be collectively hyper attentive to disabusing those notions if they're not true, and making very vivid that this is not a stalking horse for saving money and diminishing services, period. And that's just the reality of the situation.
I think it's so important and to listen, as I listened to public comment, one of the comments that a parent made near the very end of the presentation, and you could hear, you've heard negative comments about changing the timelines. And I just, I feel like this is important to mention, so forgive me, that, you know, once I get here and I get a chance to talk about special education, "We separated evaluation from the development of the plan for the student." And a lot of people see that as changing timelines and extending that and not being positive. What the parent said was, is when you sit at a table and you listen to someone tell you that your child is deficient in some way, you feel that, and you're grieving. You are not ready to listen to a plan. And so, she said, "That rule," to her, "avoids whiplash."
Can I respond to that?
Now, that was a parent's description, not mine. It was a parent's.
Can I respond to that? Most parents know well before you have an IEP that their child has a disability. And I say that as a, as someone who's on the, you know, who has children with disabilities, and am also an advocate and worked on WACAC, and my husband was on the board for the state agency for families with autism, and we advocated for them. Most parents are well aware. So, the MET, the preliminary meeting, if it's to protect the feelings of the parent, I don't think, there might be a case of a woman who's grieving at that meeting because she's just realized what the diagnosis is, but I think that that's pretty rare. And I think anything that diminishes the opportunities for parents to be involved and part of the process is a problem.
And I would agree with you.
Is taking away advocacy for the best interest of that child. Because, to me, the parent is going to advocate the strongest for the interests of their child.
I think it's important to note, though, that nothing in this rule package diminishes the role of parents in this process.
So, the MET, when it meets, and this is, and this, I, because I honestly just, because it is confusing for me.
Sure.
So, I'm told that there, the MET will no longer, the, you know, the multi-disciplinary...
Multi-disciplinary Evaluation Team.
Team that meets before the IEP and goes over sort of the evaluation process. And the parent have a right to be there.
Yes.
And I remember with my oldest son with autism and being brought into that meeting, and how critical that was for me to understand the process at that point, and to also come up with an alternative, because I, we disagreed with the school's assessment, and we were able to get an independent assessment before the IEP. I'm sorry if I'd be... So, anyway, so how does it, so you're saying, how does, how is it changed? Why the change in the language?
Yep.
And why is, what are you saying about the MET?
The parent still is part of that evaluation team.
The MET?
Mm-hmm.
So, the MET still exists?
We have removed the language, multi-disciplinary evaluation team, but elsewhere in statute is the requirement that you have a team of professionals and the parent. And it says, there is a subsection that says, "The parent must be there." So, the parent, nothing has changed about the parent being there. As Eleanor said, it's a process change around having that team to do the evaluation, which the parent is part of, get the consent of the parent, and then have the IEP team develop the plan. But the parent's role is not diminished in any way by these rule changes.
So, the parent can be, is part of the MET, this evaluation team, has a right to be notified, a right to come in?
Oh, absolutely.
Doesn't have to sign anything prior to, and is also a part of the IEP?
Yes.
So, and still is.
Yes, I mean, Rule 340.1702, I've been looking at this a lot the last few days.
Yeah, but, so why change the language if it's not changing anything?
Align with IDEA.
It's an alignment, yeah.
But then, but the IDEA is less protective, and the Michigan law is, provides more rights than IDEA.
But this part of the law we're not changing.
So, why do we want to align with IDEA?
The part of the law that says, "The parent of the child suspected to be a student with a disability is being part of the evaluation," that is not being changed. That is specified in Michigan rule, and we are not changing that. The language, multi-disciplinary evaluation team and some of that, that's what we're trying to get in alignment with the feds. But the role of the parent as part of a team to evaluate the specific needs of a student with disability, or a student suspected to be a student with disability, is not changed in any way here.
So, but you're saying, but then you're saying you're aligning it. So, it's like, you're saying it's not changing, and it is changing, so...
The word is going away. I think that the example that I've tried to give, for those of you who are used to special education, the evaluation review used to be a meeting. People believed it needed to be a meeting. There's nothing in statute that requires it to be a meeting. When the federal government monitored us, they assured us that it needed, we needed to review existing evaluation, not have a review evaluation meeting. A lot of people thought that went away, that it was a right, it was a removal, it was a change. I can give you many examples.
So, the meeting that I had with my son, with regard to my son, where we went over the evaluations, you're saying you still do an evaluation, but we just don't need to meet?
What you said is not what I said, so...
Okay. I'm glad.
Evaluation as a process still needs to occur. But evaluation is a process, not simply a meeting. So, a meeting would still be part of the process, but that there's a process of gathering the information around the student so that you can evaluate their needs.
Not called a MET.
So, there's not, but there's not a requirement for a meeting of some sort?
For a, for the evaluation, there is a requirement to come together, yes. It is not called, we are proposing that we no longer in Michigan call it a MET.
What would it be called?
I was getting tired.
Eileen.
I would like to just bring this back to a board level for a minute. Let me ask a couple of questions. Just let me ask you both, there are all five of them. First of all, if you can explain to us why there are multiple sets of rules, and if there would ever be a way to consolidate them into one document with breakouts for the specific parts of the federal law that we're trying to deal with. Okay, I just want to think about that. And then...
Can I answer that one first, or forget that answer? If you followed the trend over the last seven or eight years, what you would have seen is, is that we have removed anything in our Michigan administrative rules that was a duplication of what's in IDEA. And that has been a process over the last few years, removing language that was duplicated in the Michigan administrative rules. There are many states who do not have, so to your question, separate rules. They follow IDEA.
Well, we don't want to do that because we're less restrictive.
But I'm just saying, but you asked the question, could there be one set?
Well, the reason I'm asking it is because so much of what I'm hearing, I mean, there's a woman who's got 3,200 signatures on a petition because she's convinced that her son, who is autistic, would be not autistic underneath this set of rules. And I see nothing in it, when I read it, that could possibly intervene or interfere with the federal definition. But when you look at that amount of intense opposition based upon inaccuracies, it goes to me, it says to me, it's the way that we're positioning ourselves for public information.
So, Eileen, I would, if you, if I could, I think that's a great example of that fear is completely unfounded by the rule change, but then that goes to our need. It may not be a rule problem. It may be a policy documentation and technical assistance issue outside of the rules to help people, help everybody understand exactly what the rules say. So, there's rules as a document, and then there's how they're applied. And that's the part which we need to do a lot of, and the Office of Special Education has been and plans to continue to do that, to make sure that people do understand what an autism diagnosis looks like. So, I think you're, I think you're hitting on an important point going forward, that whatever the rule is, it's important for us to make sure that, that people really understand what it is, because of the confusion that we've seen, even of people looking at the rules.
So, then the second part of this is that we, we're elected, we're not part of the department, but people turn to us as validators of the department process. And I would say that on any issue which could become controversial, remember Marty, when we were talking about what kinds of things Mike could get in trouble with if he went out too far in advance?
I haven't done any of that.
Well, this isn't Mike, but this is an MDE issue, which is a normal course of doing business. If you had brought it to us 18 months ago when you were starting the process, you wouldn't have been on the board. So, right?
Three.
Okay. We would have been, we could have told her. Well, but we wouldn't have thought to, so maybe they could be included in an orientation. But there's another way of handling this, which is somehow you have to bring the board into the process so we can become salespeople and we can become commerce downer. You know, we can say to people, "I hear you, let me record this, let me get back with you," and forward and on for departmental response. We don't want to add to that. Michelle, with all due respect, yes, you should be able to ask people what they think of this, but you should also be able to say, "This is the framework within which this information is incorporated, and this is how it really works," which goes back to what the department needs to give us.
Good answer, Rachel.
Yeah, and what I would say is that if you're starting anything like this with Marty's feelers up as to what could become problematic, it would be that before you started public hearing again on anything that he, that Marty thinks could become contentious with his vast, looking back of what things have popped up to bite people, it would be to have an update before you start public hearings on almost anything. So, that it's part of the record, we're calm, we know what to expect, we can tell people what's going on, and we can tell them that that commentary is going to be coming back, and it will be part of a larger vision as the process continues. And you did a great job, Mike, of putting it on paper, but by that time, because the field was already starting to react, it was reactive as opposed to proactive. I would say that, you know, when did you start the public hearings?
The public comments started about a month ago, but...
Ooh, so that wouldn't have helped.
But I, I would, I'd actually like to take some ownership for what you just said, Eileen, as new in my role, when I saw rules start to come across my desk. I think in retroactively looking back, we could have briefed the board sooner in different ways, and that could have helped with the education. We educated the field quite a bit.
Yeah.
But we may not have educated you as well as we could have, so...
Marty's really good at picking out.
Right. I think we learned from that about, just what you said, the importance of making sure, and special ed is one of those things, if I can, where it is very tough. And there's a lot that goes on in special ed that you probably wouldn't want to have a briefing on all the time. It's because it's quite technical, it's quite specific. So, learning and making sure that you guys are prepped, I think, is an important learning from this process for us, so I think we can...
Richard, twice.
I was going to say the same thing, actually, that about including the board. If we had known 18 months ago that you were doing this, we could have been involved in explaining to people that they should be aware that this is going on, because there are so many people who didn't know.
And still don't.
It was the professionals who knew, it was the professional parents knew, but the average parent maybe didn't know. And maybe they don't communicate as well as they should with their other parents.
Do you have any comment on that, Eleanor? Let me say what you're thinking, we're all trying to get at the essence here.
I think we've already looked at what steps we could put in to help make sure that everyone here at MDE and the State Board knew where we were in our process. So much of the process is not our process, it's regulatory agency process. Some of the changes that you see in the proposed rules are, is language that was provided by the regulatory agency. They were not changes that we made.
Say a little more about that.
Right.
Say a little more about that, that regulatory environment work. So, this is why it would be...
No, I think you can, I've avoided, I've tried really hard.
But I think, I think now we need to give a little more sense of that because that's accurate. And secondly, it's why, just trust me, it doesn't mean, you know, you can do, I guess we can do, but it isn't as simple as it sounds sometimes. It isn't as simple to change to 9 o'clock. I thought that was a no-brainer two weeks ago. Just change it till 9 o'clock. No, you have a year delay if you change it to 9 o'clock because of the process issues related to...
So, the administrative rules process, which we use for things outside of special ed, and actually, it is the...
All the time.
I don't know who it's the creation of, but it is certainly under the governance of LARA, the License and Regulatory Affairs Office, the Office of Regulatory Reinvention specifically. And so, we work with them around any rules, changes, like Eleanor said, and I have a doc, this is probably not what you want to spend time talking about, but this document explains places where ORR, the Office of Regulatory Reinvention, said, "Change it from this to this because it brings it more into alignment with statute," or that, "It brings it more into alignment with IDEA, it's more technically appropriate." So, once, so we work, we get all that feedback from the field. That's where we start. What's important to do? Then we kind of engage in the rule, when we get to the official rulemaking process, it is working with LARA, ORR. They approved our new public comment system, for example. That was something we had to get approved by them. You can't just say, "Oh, I'll take public comment," you know, with a stand out front. You have to have ORR approves it because it has to be an approved venue.
No, I'm sorry, is LARA a state or federal?
State.
State.
But it does get to a different nature of the regulatory agency, because a state agency that is promulgating regulations to a Department of Education that does have a different standing under the Constitution for education policy, et cetera, even though you have the rulemaking authority. I mean, it does get into issues of whether we have to conform to the other processes under the state, I mean, which is a, and if they're leading us to diminish things that we don't have to diminish, then that's a can of worms, too. I mean, my attitude towards this is a little bit simpler. It's that, under the law, you have the rulemaking authority. However, we as a State Board of Education have constitutional, you know, policy shaping for education. Our job in this is to provide advice, encouragement to you on how you do special ed rulemaking, and if you make decisions that are so horribly bad, then we sanction you.
Right.
Period. And so, our job is to try to be nurturing or supportive of a process that is as fulsome and attentive to people's issues, is your call. And then, if you make a really horrible call, you know, that's on you, and...
I live with this every day. I mean, I thought, just as an aside, before we go back to this, but to support that point, I mean, I really do think for Dan's committee, or maybe the entire board, I should probably do you a service by talking more about what the job really is, because I don't think you really know. I don't hold you responsible for that. You see this, I mean, yesterday alone, okay, my call, wish a lot of these weren't my call, by the way, but making a decision on now that there was the second round of teacher testing for the pre-test, let's rethink the way that we're looking at that cut score a bit, because now we've got more data. That's an example. Yesterday, Benton Harbor, again, wish it wasn't my call. I'd like to not be the one to have to hold state aid or put their feet to the fire on going to the next step like Pontiac, but that may be what we're going to have to do. So, I'm getting at is, I live with that every day, knowing that there are tough calls literally every day that I should be held accountable by you to those.
To the public.
And ultimately, to the public, sure. But I'm just saying, again, I, I'm going to say this without, if I'm not careful, it'll sound insensitive, but this is in that same array, no more important, no less important than these other things we're doing all the time. And in this case, it had an 18-month, I get the point about we're involving the board, but I don't want to lose the point that we did have advocacy groups. We may not have had, and apparently did not have, an advocacy group that should have been involved or wanted to be involved.
The, one of the advocacy groups that has been, that submitted, or was on, did some publicity around this, the Michigan, I just had it in my head, Michigan Protective Services, they, they have been involved, and their comment back actually to us, Eleanor made this point earlier, their comment to us is supportive of some, supportive of some with changes opposed to some. That's kind of the tenor of public comment in general. It's rarely, "We don't like any of it, dump it all." It's good, pretty good.
Which helps inform us.
So, that's an example of a group that we engaged early, and that is still engaged in the process through to the end. So, we, you know, that, we did engage them, but they still, at the end, have some things they want to comment on, and that's the process of getting to this across the state of people.
And just to tell you how the day-to-day job would, would, would work, it does work, is that that's exactly the kind of thing that, I didn't understand the firestorm, because that's exactly what we don't even know yet until we see it and get it combined, and then I'm certainly not going to move rules forward that somehow have a substantive number of folks that say, "On that rule, we're all opposed, and here's why," and it seems to make sense for the reasons John's saying. I mean, I think, again, I, sounding a tad defensive here, but the thing I don't understand, especially the radio interview last night, really got me on the way home. So I watched the news, I even called into Channel Four, because they had it totally wrong based on an advocacy group presenting it a certain way, is that, I mean, Eleanor's a perfect example, in the field for a number of years. You look younger, and, you know, you've been around a bit, like I have. And these are folks who dedicate their whole life to this, and there's almost a tone, when you listen to some of these interviews, like, "We're out there trying to get them." And I, I wanted to be sensitive when I first started this comment an hour ago or whenever, that I do get why people should be concerned, I just think we don't deserve it, actually, and we're still have more of the process to go, and these things, just like the one you just mentioned, when we start to lay out on the table, that's how this hard work works, it's going to be laid out on the table, and you're going to see this cluster of, "Not that rule," and reasons why, some concern about this rule, maybe a worrying issue, and then, hey, I mean, we're even in a position where you can further some rules-
Some do not move forward.
Some do not move forward.
And this is, in the last five years, I think, six years, I've, this is the third rule package. And it's a learning experience for me, because each one of them has been different. There was silence on the last rule set. The one before, there was a J-CAR hearing. So there have been different responses, so we need to establish a protocol, not based on what we think will be white noise, no pun intended, but we need to develop a protocol, so we're always bringing the board along the way, to assure that that happens. We knew that we needed to make sure that we got to the public, and we made sure we involved parents in that process, and in the, in advocacy groups. We knew we could not just talk to educators and administrators. Apparently, we did not do enough to make sure that we spread the word, at least further.
Richard, you were next, yes, sir.
And, and this is a, a good lead-in to my, just my thoughts. I don't, I don't hold MDE at all to blame for failing to anticipate what develops on, in the, in the political world. I, I don't, and so I respectfully disagree with your, your thought that maybe you didn't do enough, I suspect you've probably done all that you could. I've deeply appreciated your response to the various questions about it, and frankly, this is an arcane process, that I've, I appreciate coming to understand some of the hoops that you have to go through and, and how these rules are developed. So I've, I've appreciated the MDE's response all along here. And some of that, Michelle, is your questions, your, your questions are what's kind of helped us open that, that can of worms and see what's crawling around in there, and, and I-
You do get colorful toward the MDE.
Well, we do. So I, I just want to say, I mean, thank you, MD, for, for handling this, I, I hope you won't, you know, blame yourselves, but obviously, I think we do towards clarity and building confidence, and is, is what we want to do, but as, and as you were just saying, you know, a previous version of these rules, no interest whatsoever, but coming right off, I've got a, I, I'm making a connection in my head between, you know, Common Core and all of the unease and distrust, and now distrust coming with other rule changes that would otherwise be non-controversial.
John, and then Eileen, and then Kathy, and then Michelle.
I don't want to get into the weeds further, but I would just flag what, I didn't mean to cut you off, but I, I do think there's, there's larger issues that we should just make sure we all know what the discretion is of the state superintendent in this case, because one, one perception as this stuff has been discussed is that this is somehow conforming to federal, you know, requirements, which, as you point out, Michelle, may or may not be what you want to do, but, but there's a different issue about, I assume, and Carol may tell me I'm wrong, I assume there's some rulemaking process for state government executive decisions.
Yes, correct, yes.
And I assume that when Kathy, the executive orders were passed that put the rulemaking authority that previously was for special education, other things with the State Board, with the state superintendent, that that may or may not mean that that has to be harmonized with the rulemaking process of the rest of the executive, because this is a different beast. So, if that is not the true, meaning if the executive orders didn't clearly say, "This is now part of the same rulemaking process of these executive control by the governor, but it's under the state superintendent," unless it said that explicitly, I think you have license to make the rules however the heck you want. Now, there may be a lot of pressure continuously to harmonize with the way we want to, you know, streamline, simplify, have less public input in our rulemaking process for the executive, but that is potentially a different creature than your rulemaking authority.
Well, that's interesting, I, I, I missed it before my time, obviously, but what was, did the board have to confirm, conform to that twenty years ago?
There's two pieces that you're talking about, but one is idea, which is very prescriptive, and one is-
And that's a federal.
But, that's federal, state law, and the state law for special ed says that you shall promulgate rules. What is said you shall promulgate rules, there's no discretion with the state superintendent or the board or anybody, even when it was with the board, to deviate from the process, which ends up at the legislature under the Joint Committee on Administrative Rules, commonly known as J-CAR.
And I would like to underscore what Carol just said, there's no latitude to deviate from the process. Now, there are points in the process where the state superintendent has to sign off before it moves forward, where there's, there's points, but the process of promulgating rules is something that is a set process that ends with what Carol just said, J-CAR.
You don't have discretion, but have there been-
Not in the process.
Have there been changes to the process driven by the legislature executive that have changed the number, nature, and frequency of public input, timeframes, in order to accomplish something?
Not the best, no.
Save money, you know, expedite.
I think, I think they would try to expedite.
I mean, that's what it sounds like, but, you know, we don't, I don't know.
The rulemaking process?
No, I know, I-
I don't remember anything being-
If you're not, if this rulemaking process has to conform to a different rulemaking set of procedures of the whole, you know, state government, and they've somehow changed that, then the issue is not, Mike, why did you change the process, or what's our process, it's why did the whole decision-making process change to have these parameters for public input, you know?
So we're obligated to follow that process? Did it change, is the question, since, not to your knowledge, you're saying, at least not in any recent-
In fact, we have a check sheet, and once we go through sign-offs, the Office of Regulatory Reform Reinvention makes us do a checklist, and if anything isn't followed, like hearings and-
If it did not change, then why do we need to change anything to conform to it?
Okay, and now I understand what you're asking. The, the process for promulgating rules did not change. What did change are federal laws, as well as the needs of Michigan students with disabilities, and so we want to use the process of promulgating rules that is unchanged to update them and bring them, and make them more efficient and more effective in terms of increasing outcomes for students with disabilities. So it's, we want to change some of the content of the rules, but the process to get to rules is like an immutable path.
And for example, one I heard on the radio last night, which, again, just gets my blood boiling a little bit, and I wanted to clarify, again, an hour ago, as, as an example, I don't even think this is in there, but for the sake of discussion, just in case it was in there, somehow this modified caseloads, I'm not moving the rule on. You know, so it's not debating whether or not, and they can't make us do that, the process can't, can't somehow prostitute that and say, "Hey, we're going to sneak in for money-saving reasons," which was the tone last night on the radio, that somehow, supposedly, I guess, it didn't mention me by name, but I've had no contact with the governor or any of the governor's folks or anything on that, and will not, and, but it, there certainly was kind of an inference, almost, that this is all in cahoots to try to save money, and all I'm getting at is, if they tried to through the regulatory process, because I guess theoretically that is controlled by, not by us, they can't do what I just said, they can't take the content of that, meaning we're going to change the caseload to make it less costly, they can't do that, we're the only ones that can do that.
That, that sounds different, again, from what was just described, that we were making some changes to conform to some requirements of a process.
No, we supply the-
Versus we're making changes of a substance.
Yeah, I apologize if I was unclear, we supply the content of the rules. So if we want the rules to say, well, we don't like, you know, unilaterally, but through our process, we supply what the content would be. So the process itself would not force us to make or change any rule. What we were talking about is how ORR works with us to say, "This word is obsolete, and it doesn't align with," but it, it's very technical changes, that the pro, the content, anything substantive outside of arcane rule of law sorts of things, we supply the content based on what the field says and our assessment of what the federal law is saying. And, again, under, under the jurisdiction of Mike's approval of what we put, I was trying to think of how to put it, but, the approval of what we put forward. So, the only thing that goes into the rules-making process is what we put into it.
Yeah. And I don't think that's in there, John, so I don't want to confuse the issue, I don't think there is something in there related to staffing level changes that looks like we're trying to say. I'm only saying that, since it's said on the radio, and it's said in every media thing I've seen, I'm just trying to dismiss that if somehow it happened to have been in there, I'm not moving the rule on it. So I, if that answers it without-
The way I understood that is it gives the local districts flexibility, and many of the local districts have been applying for waivers to increase the caseload.
That's a good ques-
The assumption is that if flexibility is given to the local districts, they will use it to increase the caseload, it's a logical, logical assumption.
So let's, let's, it is a logical, so let's undo it, that's why I just said, it won't move if it said that, we're not moving that rule, but, but more importantly-
Is that a clear statement that that rule will not move?
No, um, can I just clarify what the rule actually is doing? The caseloads are, and Eleanor might want to add to this, but the caseloads themselves are specified elsewhere in, in rule, and we are not changing that rule, so you, the caseloads are not changing. What we want to change is the requirement that local districts annually evaluate their, the demographics of their students with disabilities population, and by demographics, I actually mean distribution across the eligibility categories, and then make sure their staffing is appropriate for those categories. So as we know that the populations of students with disabilities change over time, you want to have the appropriate staff resources, you don't want a bunch of teachers who are certified in visual impairment when you have a large autistic student population, you want the right kind of staff for the needs. So this rule is not actually flexibility in terms of caseloads or staffing levels, it's saying, "We now will require you to explain how you're going to ensure that you have the appropriate staff resources for the, for the needs of your students with disabilities." Do you have anything to add?
Well, and that some of-
Does it say that explicitly? Well, does it say, does it give, does it give numerical numbers, or does it say appropriate? I mean, that's, because that's one of the issues, like-
Right, but that's what I'm saying, elsewhere in law, it says what caseloads must be, so we don't need to-
In, in state law.
In state law, yes.
Michigan Administrative Rules.
Michigan Administrative-
This doesn't change.
And it didn't go away.
Yeah. So caseloads are still specified, yep.
Some of the changes, and, and John was, was speaking toward, you know, like, why make the changes, and I always start, nineteen seventy-three, that's why we make changes, because that's how old this is. And so there are some things that are in rule, if, I would, I would not want to be working, delivering services with something forty years old, so that's why we change it. So that's why it's continually been under revision. So, some of the changes that are proposed are actually as a result of complaints. So when we get complaints that there is abuse of caseloads, then we look at what's in our rules, or what could be in our rules, to help prevent that. We don't want to spend our time responding to complaints. If we can build something within our rules that would hopefully help guide districts, then we see that as proactive. So, and, we would never expect, it would be a lot to ask, to expect every person in the state that works with students with disabilities, the two-hundred-plus students and families, to be aware of every rule change, and certainly to understand it with any depth. That, that would be unrealistic. But certainly, and I appreciate the faith in, in both Mike and Vanessa to know, that our staff puts forth our best effort to review these rules, to make proposed changes based on input, and then to welcome public comment. So for that, we do appreciate that.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
I have, I, I got something, an email, a woman talking about the continual of services.
When I first got on the board, we talked about the continual of services, and I, I think we're still talking about that. But the, the, her point was that she thought the rules eliminated the continual of services, and that's, it's all total inclusion, and there are no more, there's no more centers. Is that, is that the case, or is-
No, we heard public comment from probably six or eight people yesterday who felt that our rules were closing Beekman.
At what?
Our rules were closing Beekman Center, there is absolutely, we have no authority to close a school, and there is nothing in our rules that speak to closing anything.
Okay, let's go to those, so I can respond to this.
So there's certainly a lot of misconception.
That's not true.
That's not true, yeah.
Eileen.
Thank you. I see a document, I have a dream here, I see a document that has in it the other sets of rules, and then involve the things that we want to have in this, in this part of the rule, because so much of what we're talking about is what people can't see, and we didn't know about it either. I mean, we did, but we were having to address it point by point, and we have very, very wonderful professional people rocking back on their heels right now, and they're sitting down, saying, "Oh, my gosh, you know, how do we fix this?" So I would love to see if there's any way at, at some point to start framing it that way. It may not be, "I hear you, there's staff time and only so many hours in the day," but that would have fixed a fair amount of this. And the other thing that I think is worth bringing up, is that sitting at this table are a number of parents whose children have had IEPs in the past, there is nothing that strikes terror into the heart of a child, or a parent of a, with a kid who has an IEP more than anything that changes anything. And it doesn't even matter if it's working, you just don't want to change, you just don't want to see the, you know, stuff coming down the pipe. So any way we can simplify this for the future would, would save you guys some time later on. I know it will cost a lot upfront, and I don't know how hard it would be, but that would have fixed it, I think that would have fixed it.
That's partly the technical assistance comment.
And answering a lot of questions.
Please.
Yeah. Is it my turn?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Couple of things, I want to unders, sorry, I want to underst, who, who is LARA, and, like, who actually sits on that, in this Office of, you know, Regulation Reform and Reinvention? I know J-CAR, you explained that, but who are this, this Office of Regulation Reform and Reinvention that says-
It's an office within LARA. I mean, I don't know the people over there, but I'm not trying to be flip, but like state government, LARA is another-
Civil servant, they, folks, okay.
Yes.
Carol, do you want to-
I'm going to ask Mary.
Yeah.
The License and Regulatory Affairs is what LARA stands for, it's another department of the state, and the Office of Regulatory Reinvention is an office within that, and they are charged with administrative rule promulgation, and I'm sure a number of other things as well, like most offices in state government, but they are the ones who govern that process, for not just the Department of Ed, for everyone.
And it governs the process, not the content.
Right.
Right, I gotcha. So they're the ones who says you have to have so many meetings within a certain-
And we actually exceeded their requirements on that.
Okay.
They say two weeks of public comment and one meeting, and we did four weeks and two meetings.
Okay, and, so the, the nine-to-five kind of thing, you said you'd have to wait a year in order to get it to be at nine o'clock or later off those hours, because you were changing-
It's because of the rules, there's rules regarding notice of public hearing, and where that has to be published, has to be published in the Michigan Register, it has to be, there has to be a certain amount of time.
Right, so if you had originally had it for after-hours, you wouldn't have had to wait a whole year.
And at Mike's urging, we've added to our process here that we will always ensure that there are after-hours meetings for public hearings. Previous public hearings for special education, as Eleanor said, have had two people attend and nobody after-hours. We can appreciate that this time, there was, and we are excited, I mean, it may sound like we're not, but we're really excited about the level of engagement that we're getting from the public. So it was a good learning experience for us here at the department about that check on our own process to make sure we have hours into the evening hours.
Which, again, would exceed, but I've asked for it to-
Would exceed their requirements, right.
I've asked for it to exceed the requirements of LARA's.
If I could check, and I, I just wanted to second something John said, and I, I pardon me, wants to go point by point on some of these criticisms and issues that
have been brought up by, by Marcy and others. But I think a lot of this has to do with this, this financial squeeze we're in, the fact that, you know, so many families have felt that their services that they've gotten to, for their children have been underfunded, especially in, you know, districts outside of Washtenaw and Oakland and the higher-serving ones. Even though, but even parents there feel that they're often dealt short change. So, I think with all of these reforms coming down, things happening at a very high pace, sort of the lack of funding to the schools and the pressure to make cuts, I think it's, that's the environment that is sort of giving rise to a higher level of distrust towards, you know, you know, folks that are making the rules around education.
And this is, if I may just say, this is...
I don't think it's anything personal against you, I think it's, it's a broader issue.
But we, we deal with it, it is a broader issue. We deal with it on every single thing that we're asked to implement. So, I'm asked to implement a dissolution of two districts. I'm given no discretion on it. It's clear in the law what you have to do. Then I have to have hearings where I have no discretion, having people yelling at me and taking us on because of the change. Now, that, that's a change. That's a change. You don't have a district start...
You can't take it personally.
No, I'm just, but what I'm getting at is everything we do, by definition, the second we do it, there's a group of folks who are involved in that that are worried about it. I mean, we're used to this, and, and I understand it. I was trying to start out by saying, I do, I genuinely do understand it. I do also know that Eleanor and her team, I've not seen a more dedicated group that, if anything, do everything they can to make sure our kids are going to be served. It's kind of the opposite of what the media has, has feeling, has left. Again, probably not with malice at all, but I would just say, your point about this is every, it is everything. When, dissolution's a pretty extreme one. When they suddenly say, oh, we have a new law on emergency manager, and you have to hold state aid. I don't have any discretion on holding the state aid. You don't think it shakes up the, everyone involved in that? Pontiac and pins and needles about their consent agreement? So, I mean, we do this, unfortunately, almost every day, and I, I think a little bit of this that we just have to live with is it, I don't know if I should say this or not, but it isn't helpful when the legislature kind of, in a more general sense, every time our team is in on hearings, no matter what it is, we pretty much get beat up. So, the last two hearings, I've shown up and pulled my chair up to the, and tried, you know, the paper report, I chastised the legislature, which probably doesn't help either, but it's a little bit like, our guys are here trying to work this stuff through half the time because of laws that we don't even agree with, but you put in place, and then you're beating the hell out of us. And then what I think it does is that getting covered creates kind of a tension in the public that somehow gets attributed to us when actually, they made the law. I mean, if I can be blunt, this is just what happened last week. They made an evaluation law, and suddenly, because we're trying to find a fair way to implement it, our guys are getting beat up about trying to implement an evaluation law. And, and anytime I walk in, I understand this through my daughter and everyone else, the tension about unfair teacher evaluations, which they have every right to be worried about, is of course personified, you know, in me to some degree because of the symbolism of it, and in us as a department unfairly, but it is what it is. So, I mean, we are used to it in that sense. I think what we can do and should do is what you're, what you're going through right now is what I have to go through when we get the comment period done on Thursday with the team. And then we will have everyone's comments, and I'm cer, I'm sure the ones you were ready to bring up are on the record. I'm assuming they're on the record, if they're not, they should be by Thursday. And then we're going to start to see how this affects the landscape of moving a rule or not. And I take, I do take very seriously the responsibility. I'm glad John clarified that, one way or the other, even when this was the boards, that that was the process that had to be used.
Mike, if I might, if you're interested, Michelle, all of this is under the Administrators, Administrative Procedures Act, but if you want to go online, it's michigan.gov/orr, and it clearly tells us what the Administrative Procedures Act requires everyone to do according to the chart, no discretion.
I think one of the, one of the problems is lack of communication, or not adequate communication.
Always.
I think, you know, as, as Eileen said, if we had been brought into it in the beginning, rather than at the end, we've had, if we had this discussion, or similar discussion 18 months ago, probably would have been helpful.
Who knows? Well, relax. Truly, Kathleen, 18 months ago is like, do you remember 18 months ago? In, in a wash of information, when they were first coming on the board, just what, this one made any sense to me, and I had a kid with an IEP at the, you know, in my previous existence. So, I, I think really what it comes down to is maybe four months out, or three months out saying to us, hey, we're here in this process. That would be helpful.
Well, to take along the way, we should be informed about it.
That's true, too, and it doesn't take much. It's probably 10 minutes. But the other thing is that we're in an election year. As Craig Ruff said recently, I hate even-numbered years because it's just a more volatile environment. You add on to that the ability of people to blog and get information that's inaccurate, and it's hard. It's really hard to figure out what the right story is. So, we just...
Well, we have to tell our story. What you've explained here very clearly...
Lovely.
We should be explaining to the public, which we are in effect with this meeting, but even more so, get it out to the...
We hear that message.
Yeah.
And we, we are always improving, we're always trying to improve as a customer service organization, and improve our communication with the field. So, I think it's a good takeaway from this.
As Richard said, it was silent on the last one. I mean, it's somewhat hard to anticipate this, but I, there's no downside to doing what you're saying.
But once you get the comments, we should be answering them, I think, somehow.
Well, there is a process by which we have to respond to them, in terms of summarizing them and clarifying them, and then like Eleanor said, we, they don't, all the rules don't move forward. If there's substantial opposition, some may not, some may, some may be modified. So, that report ultimately has to be submitted to JCAR, so...
It would be visible if there was this disproportionate number of, or any number, because they're all listed, but it was clear, here's all these comments that are negative about it, and somehow there was a way to slip the rule out anyway. It's not going to happen. And it would be so apparent if we somehow, this is where I don't get, is if we're sitting here trying to do that for some reason, that would not even make sense. But I do get where if people are suspicious that are, is there another political motive? And that's why I'm trying to clarify, we have nothing to do with that. I've had no discussions, they're not, no one else is going to be involved in our work in reviewing that. And I, I kind of confused the issue in a way by saying, if, for instance, the caseload thing had been in there, and I didn't even know you said it, it's not even in this set of rules anyway, but had it been, I wanted to use that as an example of something that we clearly would not move the rule on. And I do think, I think there's still time, you were using it more under the label of technical assistance and...
Well, policy, documentation, policy documentation.
And it would be kind of along the lines of what Eileen was describing, would it not, this communication vehicle? And, and...
If I could underscore just one point, Mike, I'm sorry, I just want to say this before we leave, leave you all to the rest of your business. You know, I, I can appreciate...
I'm not done with my report. This is just the first item.
I, I can appreciate what, what has been said here about there are all these pressures happening out there in, in the world, and that when you see two things kind of appear together, you can think that they're related. But I just want to underscore that when the, when the staff of the Office of Special Education sat down 18 months ago and said, what do we need to do to improve the delivery of services to students with disabilities? Nobody talked about budgets or cutting costs or, or what, I mean, it's not our budgets, frankly. It was about, that was not the discussion. There was no direction from anywhere. The discussion was, we need to be better. Our students with disabilities are not attaining the outcomes they need. We need to do this better in this state, the time is now. So, I want to just make sure that I'm clear about that as our intent. I can appreciate what you're saying, but the motivation was always to improve delivery of service, and I think we, we can share that goal together here with you. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for the lesson.
Okay, I'm going to not continue the rest of my report. I'll find another way to communicate that. I do, can I just say that someone on a serious note...
Thank you for having that discussion.
Well, thank you for encouraging it.
Appreciate that.
I do think there are, this is an opportunity for me and our team to have some of these dialogues more often. I would just say this, and we can talk more about this in agenda planning. We usually feel squeezed at the end of every meeting. So, that's the bit of squeezed in time.
Squeezed, oh.
So, there might be, I mean, I don't know, this, but for the sake of discussion, you know, maybe it's the one speaker, and I don't want to, this has been very helpful today, but it was hard to, as hard as you tried, it was hard to keep it to the time that, that we asked our presenters. It was in writing, it was repeated, I said it in the beginning, and no malice, by the way, they're very enthusiastic about their work. We had good questions about it, so I mean, in that sense, it was really worthwhile. I'm just saying then it, consistently, when we debrief, we say, there you go, you deferred all your items again. And, and I find another way, usually mid-month or something like that, but I, I do think sometimes it's the contributor to not having the proper communication, is I'm kind of squeezed on every meeting. So, I'll try to help me with that if you would, and I'll, I'll bring it up again in agenda planning. Because we don't want to be squeezed on state and federal legislative update. We don't know what nastiness may be in the works here. I know there were two, not by you.
You referring me?
Yeah, Marty. Why don't we just, go ahead, go.
Glad it be nasty. Real quickly, obviously, there are several big issues in the legislature, one of which John mentioned earlier in his report, the turnaround strategies, the EAA bill. There is no movement in the, in the House where the bill currently sits. They are working, no official movement. We understand that there is work being done on alternative language or substitutes that we just don't have privy to, actually. And so, there were two bills, as I mentioned in the legislative report, there were two bills that were discharged on the floor of the House last week, one by Representative Lipton and one by Representative Dillon. I think John referred to those also. There's, from our, from what we understand, there's no current plan to move those quickly, if at all. It may have been a strategic move to discharge them without much argument or without much fanfare, so those sit on the House floor. As far as the educator evaluation bills, those are still in committee, again, under construction, and no real date as to when they will move. Does any other legislation you're interested in? Well, we do have two reports that the State Board has required to give to the legislature. Those were discussed last week in the legislative committee meeting, and I will pass it over to Cassandra to discuss those and hopefully move them.
Okay, and just one more update from our last, at the last meeting we had here, it was decided that the Legislative Committee should take a look at language regarding school finance and vis-à-vis potential tax break. The Legislative Committee has put that on hold for this month, because we do have time now, and there are some upcoming changes to the budget, so I, we don't have language to bring back to you this month, but we may possibly do that next month. The two reports that we have, that we have in front of you or attached to your agenda are both mandated by the legislature, and they are due, I believe, April 1st. So, we are asking that the Board approve these reports at this time so that they can be sent to the legislature. The first one is the Annual Legislative Report for School Improvement Plans, and let me just open it up here.
Should I move the approval of that one?
Yeah, why don't we go ahead and do that?
Move back, Kathy.
Move the approval of the State Board of Education Report to the Legislature on School Improvement Plans for 2012, 2013.
Thank you, move by Mrs. Strauss, supported by Board Member Barna.
Just for your information, this report is simply a collection of reports that are compiled by local schools, and then they take a look at them to make sure that they are, that they follow measurable objectives and criteria, so that's what this report does.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Thank you.
Okay, and then the second one, I would accept devotion for approval of the Strict Discipline Academies Report to the Legislature.
Don't move.
Move by Lupe.
Report.
Reported by John. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Thank you. John?
Should we talk about anything anymore? I mean, I, let me just say two things. One, on the educator evaluation legislation, is there anything more weakened or due to be helpful? I was just reading the reports of the discussion with the committee, and it seemed like there were some Republican legislators, I mean, tenure reform passed, which is a real tough thing, a big change. The key to doing it actually, so that it works well and is supportive of teachers and better teaching, is to have a good evaluation system. It sounds like some of even the Republican legislators are saying, why the heck did we put this, you know, tenure reform through where there's a share of their evaluation that's based on student achievement? That was the whole, you know, push for tenure reform was, we want to have something that evaluates teachers, including whether the students are learning. They're the ones that did that, and it does make sense if there's a good evaluation. So, they seem to be arguing against the very, you know, tough, big change, hard for teachers' unions to swallow. Now, they're saying they don't like it, too?
Well, oh, go ahead.
Well, there are some that, that don't want the evaluation. There are some legislators that don't want, want statewide standardized testing. I mean, you know, it's, it's across the board, the spectrum on, on divergence of philosophy.
Though I, I think that's what you were alluding to, Mike. It's a bit hypocritical to be driving with some of us encouraging tough tenure reform that requires ongoing demonstrations of excellent teaching, including whether kids are learning, and then to argue against the very things that are in that law that you don't want to see them anymore. Why are you having an evaluation system that does this? And then I'm talking about Republican legislators.
Yeah, yeah, I know, but maybe they realize it's basing evaluations on standardized, high-stakes standardized test scores is, is bad. Maybe they, maybe they've seen it at work and realize it's not...
Doesn't the tenure law require evaluation, and they do it, every district does their own thing, and it's all different, and it's more punitive? This, this proposal that's on the table is more supportive of teachers to be improving rather than punitive, so they don't like that.
Right, and the tenure law reform that passed included establishing smartly a thoughtful independent commission to design an evaluation that would be supportive, not legislating the evaluation process. So, this is the key thing to make this thing go, to be effective. So, anyway, just...
And then our guys are kind of asked, so why are you doing this?
Yeah.
We're going like, huh?
Why did you guys...
When do you have a thought?
I just wanted to jump in. There was a posting for Senate Education for an additional bill, which is a Papa George Bill, Senate Bill...
Which is what?
Papa George.
Papa George, which pushes back the timeline of when the teacher evaluation would take effect. So, we also have members who maybe aren't necessarily opposed to the policy, but think we're not in a position to be there yet, and so they want to sort of defer. That's coming up tomorrow in Senate Education, so we'll see what happens with that piece of legislation.
Which meanwhile, our school people are working under a law that requires an evaluation based on student proficiency, but as Kathy noted, it has no guidance on what an effective evaluation looks like, so we get the good, the bad, and the ugly out there right now. And we're putting off again the day when we have a good evaluation system in place.
But I think the, I'm suspecting that maybe some of the reason for that is because we have this law that says you have X percent is based on student growth, and now we're introducing a brand-new assessment that no one's worked with before, and is it really fair to be labeling teachers based on an assessment that is brand-new, they've never worked with before, and, you know...
New York State is any...
It makes sense to see what happens with this thing before we start firing teachers.
New York State was a little different.
And New York State, that implemented it a year early, the Common Core, and then they have the teachers ranked as a percentage of, you know, they're evaluated based on those tasks. And there's, I mean, there's a lot of pushback on that, even, like, the Board of Regents are saying that you shouldn't be using standardized test scores when you're implementing Common Core, in using it to evaluate teachers, because it's just so inconsistent, how while they were prepared to implement those tests across the state, and I think Michigan is the same way. I think there's some areas, communities that are ready, and then some that have, are going to be completely, yeah.
I would observe, I mean...
And it's going to blame, it's going to punish the teacher for an administrative decision. I'm sorry, John.
That's right. I mean, we're, we're contributing to an even more kind of fractured and non-aligned set of standards, assessments, and evaluation, and we're kind of, now we're, you know, putting off mixing, matching, and the whole thing is very difficult for educators to cope with, as opposed to something that is coherent and we get done and in place so they can work with. So, it's just disappointing, there's anything we can do to help, but I just want to note that reality. If we keep pushing in a good evaluation system down the road, and we can't figure out the assessment because we can't agree, we're making life harder for educators and not helping them.
If we could separate the two, I think it would make complete sense. But right now, under the legislation, we can't, and therein lies the problem.
Is that what he's proposing, to hold off on the, on the standardized testing for the evaluation, or is it just the whole evaluation? Do you know the bill, the Papa George's bill?
It's Senate Bill 817, and what it essentially does is maintains the requirement from previous law, that they have to be performing an evaluation and rank, you know, giving teachers a label. But it removes the language that essentially we've been talking about, that would have the 25%, the 25%, the 50%. It jumps to 2015, 16, and starts at 50%.
Oh.
Yeah.
I was, I was really there, I was there!
It was almost as if, you thought Papa George was reading your thoughts.
No, we're on the same page!
You know, wrong. This has to be, you know, this is just an example, I know we've talked about here before, but where the cart was before the horse, and we just weren't ready for that, and we needed to have a confidence level, there's 100,000 hard-working folks that are nervous about, what does this mean for me and my livelihood, because there's no fair system that's ready for them. And individually, I should say, there are districts that have done some things that the teachers, my own former district, that the Teachers Union and the superintendent who I hired 20 years ago, worked out together in agreement, and it seems to be working well with them, that, so, great. But that's not the case across the board, and then what do you do when you're trying to, I'm waiting for some of these court cases that are gonna start flying down the road with this, appropriately, with some of this hodgepodge. But I, for now, it is what it is, right? And enough on that? We're good on legislative?
I had a, I just wanted to know what's happening with Senate Bill 120, Tolbeks Bill?
Senate Bill 120 is in the House, I believe.
It's in the House Education.
House Education Committee, and they did have a hearing last week, they did not report it out.
It was not reported out?
No, they took testimony last week.
You think it will be reported out?
My guess is yes.
It will?
Because it changed, it was, I think, I believe as it passed the Senate, was, or was introduced, it would require districts to, you know, put in their curriculums, the founding documents, the founding fathers, all that stuff. And when it's in the House now, it's, it's recommended to be in curriculum, so it doesn't require to be included in curriculum, now it's recommended.
Okay, John.
But it talks about, we have to have test for it.
Encourage me, I'm sorry.
I think, wait a minute.
John and Eileen.
I'm getting some nominations from my colleagues about, let's talk more about school turnaround at the next meeting. I just am noting, sort of, they're stuck in the air now, and what I, just want to quickly note is, we actually passed a good set of guidance on what we would like the legislature to do, or to not have inconsistent legislation with what Mike and the Department should be doing already, which is, create some criteria for what constitutes good entities, and under what conditions, after what audits, and, you know, work with us and I S Ds, do we have folks who can get the job done intervening with failing school. I would just note that, it sounds like they're still trying to push E A legislation, maybe in return for not having any more schools go into it for a year. But, I think what we really need, and what we should talk more about is, given where the E A A is, is that we do want the Department and the school, you know, reform, whatever thing I'm about, to run a process that does good assessments, audits, unique to the school, and works with everybody to do that, and then has criteria for what charter, I S D, other school district, nonprofit, could be the right vehicle to keep working with that school on its turnaround strategy. And we want that to happen, and we want either legislation that supports that, if needed, or we don't want legislation that says, no, all those failing schools have to go here, here, or here, either with a non-performing I S D, or any E A A. I mean, that's what I'm worried about, if they pass legislation that says, no, this is a strategy, and it isn't the right strategy. If we can just go ahead and animate the right strategy, let's do it. That's the kind of, yeah.
The first step in even having that opportunity was to give notice on the contract. So, I bit that bullet, as you know, to mixed reviews, mostly negative. And mostly negative from both sides somehow, I'm saying, so I don't even try to think about that anymore. It's like, all I know is, we do need options, we need to examine this individually for that school's needs, the kids in that school's needs, and then where might be the best place. And in the meantime, we'll have some time, it looks like, it's probably gonna delay this for a year, or say there's a moratorium for a year, to have a fourth year of data, fourth year of working on this, because a lot of the stuff that's in, which I think is good, in the Lipton and Dillon stuff, is actually kind of what's going on during the three and four years that they're working under this school reform office, anyway. Doesn't mean, I'm fine to have it supplemented further, if that, if that seems right, but I didn't want to, as I said earlier to some of you, I didn't want to leave a feeling like, that's not what goes on now, that's exactly what goes on now. And that's why I'm so proud of the ones that are stepping up and doing this, the overwhelming number, including whatever happened with the mayor's school today. But I...
And is it, that, my concern with the Lipton legislation as written versus why we should endorse it is, does it go beyond what we do now, to the point of something tangible different than happens that improves the learning outcomes in the schools, and insist on that in some way? I mean, that would be my missing piece from that. I mean, I'm happy to support it, or legislation like it, if it says clearly, here's what happens to understand what's going on, here's what happens to set expectations for what needs to happen next, and here's what happens to ensure that somebody does something that educates the kids, and not just process no outcome.
Right.
Well, I think it, I'm just jumping in, sorry, am I cutting anyone?
I have to leave in five minutes, six minutes, so that's all I was gonna say, is I have to leave in six minutes.
Okay.
Oh, okay. That it brings in more stakeholders, and to me, if I'm understanding it correctly, what it doesn't do is do it under this threat of extreme punishment, like, so you're working together more as a team, without this threat of, you are gonna go into an E A A, you're gonna fire all your teachers, your principal's gonna have to be fired, which I think does not create a good educational environment, when people are under that threat. And, I don't think it creates an environment where people want to cooperate, I think it's where people are terrified to speak out, to really engage. I think it gives undue influence to, for, like, people in the higher end of the hierarchy to, you know, muffle dissent, which is not good, when you're trying to turn something around. So, I think it creates a more cooperative environment, where more people are brought in without an ax over their head, which I think is a tremendous change. Now, I do understand that your point is, who's actually gonna implement, and hearing about what they're doing in Grand Rapids, how they brought in a team, and it was sort of involving the community to do the implementation of it, and maybe there's some way to, to, you know, to focus on, how do you have a team to actually implement it, in a, in a responsible and manner that everybody can accept? But I think just that change for her legislation, from what we have now, would be great.
You know, I agree with the spirit of that, by the way. A problem with that, it doesn't mean there isn't a way to try to infuse this, but a problem with that is it can't supersede federal law. The federal law requires those models within it right now.
Under the waiver?
No, even under, No Child Left Behind, under waivers from Duncan and Obama. I mean, it's, in a way, this federal law that is not, it's evolved from what was a Bush, No Child Left Behind, to a waiver-driven Duncan law, but some of the same principles in it, including that during those three years, they picked these models, and these models often have, principals gone, staffs gone.
How, so we've been living under this for a few years now, and we only have four options, which, when you really think about it, is two.
Yes.
How successful have they been?
Some have been very successful, that's, that's what I'm trying to say, we need to be good in our communication to say to those, oh, no, more than, most of them are in the right direction.
Which ones have been successful?
I'm gonna, so we're, our commitment is to end at 4:15, it's 4:07, we haven't gotten to comments, I know, I have a few, we don't have, we haven't done consent agenda yet, we're gonna lose Eileen in about two minutes. I would love to have this conversation, maybe we should just put it on the agenda to have as part of the official meeting next month.
Okay, good. So, let's move to consent agenda.
So, move.
Move by John?
Support.
Supported by Dan? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, comments by board. Dan?
Four things. One is, kudos to John on the finance presentations, I just, I think these have turned into really good, like, I'm just loving the level of information and depth of analysis that we're getting, and I just want to publicly thank you for organizing those, and I encourage you to continue to bring folks to the table, looking forward to whoever we're gonna hear from next week, next month. Second is, just have to say, I was, so I'm gonna, just in a moment of authenticity, I don't think I was paying a whole lot of attention to the opting-out-of-dissection thing, until today, right? And I, those were pretty...
I've been raving in like every...
You have, to your credit.
I told him, come to the meeting, man, you just gotta come.
And you know what? The presentations were great, I skimmed the material, like, academic outcomes are actually better oftentimes for kids who aren't dissecting, so on and so forth, I mean, it's very...
Surgeons, surgeons, never...
I actually walked out of my class, I got suspended.
I can still summon up the smell of formaldehyde.
Yeah, which causes cancer.
I know, I can still remember.
Just as an aside, I went out and gave my card to them, and asked if they would help coordinate the model state policies that are in the other districts, so we're gonna be in communication with them on, on that.
That's what I told them, sometimes that's the kind of thing that happens.
That was news to me.
Third, so I was gonna say, what we just committed to doing, which is, let's talk a little bit about the turnaround strategy. And then, fourth is the NASB stipends, which we could potentially pursue for next-gen science standards and deeper learning, those applications are due tomorrow, we've done nothing on it. It's 4,000 bucks each, it's a little bit of a lift, it's probably too late to actually organize ourselves around it, but just wanted to at least confirm that with folks before we decided to punt on the opportunity.
Tomorrow's not gonna be...
$10,000 hopefully, but we'll take more time than...
Okay, good.
Other comments?
Well, I was gonna say the same thing about having a discussion of our turnaround strategy, I think that's really important. And what, you know, explaining what we're doing, what's working, what isn't working, what's better, what's not.
Why don't we, at Agenda Planning, Mertz will have it on for where we might stick that, so that we can give it some, I think it would start with a better understanding of what we do now with schools through the reform office, because I can tell that's a little unclear, no malice, but in terms of even the Lipton stuff, it'll help inform that. But, when you want to do it, will be dependent on some of the other things, so we'll at least consider it the next agenda, Agenda Planning, rather. Any other, yes, Lupe?
Well, I want to thank every one of you for the welcome, the warm welcome that you gave the mayor, Mayor Hartwell, and the young, and the young people that came, because they were, the kids were really, oh, this is so cool. So, thank you so much for that. And I passed around the invitation for our next social justice event, which will happen on March the 20th. I've been sending you information in the calendar and everything for this event, and I'm not gonna stop until I see one of you there. These are, we do excellent work. All of this that we do is towards scholarships for students, and if you see the gala we have in October, so, that's when we present the scholarships, and also recognitions to community people. So, you're invited. Thank you.
My clan's holiday is Monday, so I'm taking the day off.
Happy St. Patty's Day.
We're good? Thank you, good meeting.